Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session. Before we open this meeting with prayer, I want to take a moment of personal privilege today, Commissioners. Because in my prayer, I want to remember a young lady that recently passed away that spent some of her last days on our shores. And that's Israel Marie Maddox, a little 13-year-old girl that had fault cancer basically all her life. She was embraced by our community and specifically the community of St. George Island. And she went from this world on April 1st. So in prayer, I'm going to pray for their family first this morning before I do other stuff. And I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that. With that, let's open with prayer and pledge. Heavenly Father, I thank you today for this good day. We ask you to touch Izzy's parents and family this day and in the days to come. We don't know how you can do it, but you have told us and communicated in your word that you're the God of all comfort. We ask you to be with them today, bring your comfort and your peace in their life. God, for things none of us will ever understand. We thank you that you're all wise and all-knowing. We look to you today for our strength. Thank you for strengthening that family today and their loved ones. Father, in Jesus' name. Now, as we open this commission meeting, Father, we look to you for knowledge and understanding and wisdom beyond what we see today, beyond the decisions we make today. That every day that you would give us here in Franklin County, for those that live here, for those that visit our shores, God, would be good days and days of prosperity and hope. We thank you for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next will be the approval of the minutes from the March 16, 2021 regular meeting.
Shall move.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bolt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. I have a discussion item. It's not a big deal, but to correct the record, I didn't notice it till I was reading the minutes from our last meeting, and it's on these, this agenda today. The pod that they've run for emergency management has been at East Point Church of God, not East Point Ascended of God.
Okay.
It was on the last meeting, and it's on today is the same line. But just to correct the record before we approve the minutes, I want to make sure that was noted. Any more discussion before we vote on approving the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimous for a. Next will be payment of county bills.
Shall move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The passage unanimous. Is Ms. Rhonda still going to be here this morning?
I'll have to ask someone, let me ask someone to call over and check and see if she's still coming over.
Okay. So I just, I asked because I didn't see her here. I know it's coming up prior to public comments.
Yeah, maybe she forgot about it.
Okay.
Alan said he knew it wasn't.
So next would be public comments, correct, Mr. Ward?
Yes, sir. And Commissioner, you have in front of you two. I'll tell you, the one, I see Mr. Covington on the line, so we will go to him here in a second. But the other one, I'm not sure, I don't see him online, but we had a discussion after he sent that in about the use of Bay City Work Camp. And I was explaining to him that right now we're in discussions with FAA about what is actually allowed at Bay City Work Camp. And we had a long conversation, so I think that's probably why he's not on the line. He realizes that won't work. But I will go ahead. Covington, I've allowed you to talk, sir. Mr. Covington, if you go ahead and unmute yourself, which you just did. Good morning. State your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of County Commissioners, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Covington. I own a home at 665 East Gulf Beach Drive on St. George Island. I just wanted to bring to your attention something that was recently brought up to me about the mobile vending vehicles that are, that's on St. George Island and the issuance of the $150 a year peddler's licenses to vendors and the use of public land and the right-of-way. As I understand, there's no county ordinance that prohibits or controls or directs mobile vending truck policies. There is a resolution, I'm not sure if it's been adopted. I've read part of the ordinance in regards to the peddler's licenses. As I understand it, as long as vendors have set permits or licenses for either the county or the state or both, depending on which type of vendor they are, they can set up in the public right-of-way pretty much anywhere. Since we're talking about public parking being so tight on St. George Island on the weekends and not being enough room for parking, why are we allowing these mobile vendors to set up on, to set up shop on public property all for $150 a year to sell their items when we could be using that public space for parking at the St. George Island Lighthouse Park? Keep in mind, I'm not talking, I'm talking about public property, not private property used by these vendors. I'm not in favor of paying more of my property tax dollars to those who feel that we as owners who rent our homes should pay more because we bring tourists into the island. That's an unfair statement. The majority of issues we have with parking in the middle of the island at Lighthouse Park comes on the weekend with day trippers. Day trippers are not renting from the owners, and therefore owners really are not responsible for that as they are not our owner tourists. During the week on S, on St. George Island, parking at the, at the lighthouse is not really an issue. As I said, it's really on the weekend during the middle of the week, middle of the island typically. The county already owns the public land along West Gulf Beach Drive and West Gory and also owns the sandlot between beside Charleston Place Homes. I have concerns about the permitting of these mobile vehicle vendors on public land, and who decides that? Is there criteria set by the county for what and whatnot is allowed? I don't want to come onto the island and see mobile trucks and vendors set up all along the public right-of-way of selling everything from potential airbrushed t-shirts to tattoos. We don't need any more traffic congestion in the middle of the islands on the weekends. If we allow this to continue, it will get worse. I strongly urge you to consider having public discussion about the public parking, mobile vendor issue, permitting and allowance on St. George Island to come up with an effective solution. Lastly, I ask why, with these vendors being allowed with $150 a year permits or licenses in the public land or public right-of-way, would our island brick and mortar store owners paying thousands of dollars a year in taxes for their storefront establishments be happy and okay with your decision to let this stand? I ask you to stop and think about this, about this situation. I appreciate your time today, and I appreciate your consideration of this matter, and thank you for all you do for Franklin County residents.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else, sir?
No, sir. That was the only two speaker. Let me, in fact, let me, I'm sorry, sir. Let me go make sure nothing came in at the last minute. I really did not check that. And yes, I apologize. There were two. Mr. Gordon Hunter is here, and he did send one this morning early. So Gordon, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to talk. You need to go ahead and unmute. Go ahead and unmute Mr. Gordon Hunter, and then you, okay, good morning. You're muted. You have three, state your name for the record. You have three minutes to address the Board of County Commissioners, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gordon Hunter, speaking, 2316 Tallyhoe, St. George Island. I'm going to defer some comments until later when the AFCON report on the fuel farm comes up. So I'll just defer until that time. Thank you.
Is that submitted as?
I will double-check. Yeah, he did for both, public comment and AFCON. He did.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
All right, talk to you then. And I also had a request from Ted Mosseller, but it looks like basically his request will be around the same time we talk about the fuel farm at the airport. Okay, so Commissioner, basically that is all the public comment requests that you want to speak on a public comment.
Did we hear back from Ms. Skipper at all?
Yeah, she'll be over shortly, so.
Okay, so we can just go on.
Go ahead and your director's report and come back, sir.
Superintendent of Public Works, Mr. Howard Neighbors. Howard, are you with us?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Yes, sir, I'm here. We're still hanging in here. We are still pleasing and beating the start up the grass cutting, which I know y'all said y'all had a meeting or something about the prison law, but we still very, very short of inmate. So we're doing the best we can do.
Howard, thank you for everything that y'all do for the county. But I would like to ask you this morning, I noticed on the report, there was some work done on Cook Street. I would like for you guys to go back when you have time on the island and make sure those ditches are clear. I know the weeds are cut, the weeds are cut and everything's been trimmed and debris picked up. But I think there's still a problem that the ditches need some maintenance done to them. So that's on Cook, Cook Street.
Okay, we hadn't started cutting grass yet. We used to wait until Easter or kind of. We've had a lot of complaints through the years about the wildflowers and stuff, so wait for the blooming stuff. Gets to blooming out, then we can start cutting.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have something for Mr. Howard, Wayne's here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Howard, there is a 35 mile an hour sign on Route 67 that needs to be replaced, and it's just north of Cora Road. If you could have a look at that, I'd appreciate it.
Right, if we look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bolt saying that made me think of one other thing, Howard. I've been made aware that in the business district on the island, everywhere in there is a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign, except for the first couple of two or three blocks of East Pine. It's still at 35. So I think we need to switch that and make it match the other ones. Is that, Michael, is that something that the board needs to do by vote to put, to match the other signs? Because it's reducing the speed limit. So what, what do we need to do?
Is it changed, yeah. Which is, I would take board action. It may just be a clerical oversight, but just to be on the safe side.
Right.
Board action, and if we're duplicating something that was done years ago, there's no harm, no foul.
Okay, so I would be seeking a motion to
Yes, sir.
Reduce that first three blocks of East Pine to 25 miles an hour designated by a 25 mile an hour sign.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimous. Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Howard, Wayne's here?
I got one more thing too, about the stuff that Mrs. Noah brought up. I got up with Michael. Duke Energy called me about the light situation on 98. They supposed to come up with a quote on that and get back up with Michael on it.
Okay.
Yes.
Did you tell me about the, the lights from like 24th or 25th Avenue all the way down to the old Burger King? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, from, from Red Station, from Red Station to the, to the old Burger King. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Sounds good. Why you mention it, just to make the rest of the board aware, I got Mr. Danny Collins doing a quote for my district from Barber Seafood, basically to North Bay Shore, for the same thing, to put some streetlights on 98. And it's something he said, we're probably going to have to spend some money on poles and wiring, infrastructure. So I'll probably looking to use some of my local option gas stacks to do that, since it is infrastructure. So that, that'll be coming back as well. I won't necessarily be on you, but just so you're aware, Howard.
Okay, right.
Thank you, Howard. Appreciate it.
Well, I would go.
All right. Ms. Skipper, since you're here, we'll go ahead and take you next. Thank you. With your request.
Thank you, Erin.
Spend some money.
Hi, Rhonda Skipper, the property appraiser. Erin was kind enough to help me with getting this quote together. We have found more and more in the past years that we have to have a four-wheel drive to actually do our job the way it should be done. We put, you've allowed me in the past to put some of my budget up toward things like this, and I know I have enough money in that bank to cover the purchase of this truck. I have copies of the quote, if y'all would like to see it. It's for, it's for a total of $30,247.
That sounds pretty consistent with every other new vehicle purchase we've looked at.
Okay.
And that's a functional truck, isn't it, that has four-wheel drive to get you into terrain?
Yes, and it, and it's, it's made for work, not for luxury.
Yeah. Hurricane Michael taught us all a bunch of really hard lessons.
He did, and one of the things too was we were using personal vehicles because we had to, and FEMA will not reimburse. So, like I say, it's something desperately needed, and I'd like to ask for you to give me permission to purchase this with some of the excess money that I've turned back in.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's a four-o vote, yes.
Thank you guys very much, and you too, Erin. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Rhonda, for everything y'all do for the county.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Yeah, Erin, the only reason I said yes like that is because I had the unfortunate incident of actually looking at vehicles since my wife was in a wreck, looking at the price of vehicles. Yeah, $30,000 is not nowhere close to what I would pay. You know what, we would pay for it on a lot, I promise you.
And a four-wheel drive, it's even better price than that one.
That's good. That's good. So yes, thank you for noting that for us, Erin. Up next, Mr. Fonda Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I have one item on my report this morning. For board's information, in the past, there has been an animal control appeal board to, to handle any appeals that would need to be heard. At this time, the board has lost several members, and I'm asking the board to appoint new members to serve on this board. The ordinance is section 417, the animal control ordinance. The membership control appeal board should include that following one member knowledgeable in the area of animal behavior, one member with law enforcement background, one licensed to practice veterinary medicine in the state of Florida, one member knowledgeable in the area of public health, and one citizen member. I knew I had reached out to you, Commissioners individually, and you may have talked some, but I also have some names here that you may want to consider as an action. But knowledgeable of animal behavior, I have Mr. Bud Hayes. One member with law enforcement background, I have Mr. John Solomon. One member veterinary medicine in the state of Florida, Dr. Hopson Farm. A member knowledgeable in public health, Mr. David Walker. And one citizen member, Mr. Brett Maybrough.
I think that's a good collection of people, Fonda.
Yeah.
I really do. I know that with Mr. Bud, I talked to him about it, I guess it was last Friday, and I and I had in mind to talk to him yesterday to make sure he was still good with it, but I guess he would be. Uh, but yesterday I was, I had the unfortunate incident of being by myself at work, so, you know, it is what it is. We, people are not always well, so, so I didn't get to make that call, but I, I'm certain that he still wants to serve on this board.
Yes, I understand, and, and it's, at least three, we need, uh, we had a case to come up and, uh, a P to come up, and, uh, we, we did not have enough to, to hit the appeal. So, uh, moving forward, we'll have this board in place.
Okay. Fonda, without going into real deep detail, I would like for you to share kind of really what this Animal Control Appeal Board is, not just for the commission, but for the sake of the public that might be watching the meeting, so they know what it is we're, we're making sure we have in place.
Yes, what board does is, uh, we, as animal control, when we have, uh, come about, and we just, you know, just say, for instance, like bite cases, and we declare the dog dangerous, the owner has a time to appeal the decision that we have declared upon that dog. So, if it's dangerous, uh, they can appeal that, or if they do not appeal, they move forward, they assign, they, they sign and agree to all the documents, and then that dog bites again, we, uh, most likely would declare to have that dog destroyed or that animal. So, if they don't want to have the animal destroyed, then they file an appeal, they can also file an appeal towards that. So, and this when the board would step in and hit appeal and make the final decision.
Thank you, Fonda. So, the board action you're looking for is for us to adopt these names as being that appeal board?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's a four-o vote, yes. So approved, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, for us, uh, Carson Ray, well, we have different things that come about that we are putting up new, uh, sign that the TDC, uh, uh, furnished for us to, that, that lets you know what the beach, what's the flags and different other things is on that sign. So, they are going up to date. Uh, also, uh, basketball court in East Point had been refurbished, lights have been re, repaired around the court. And, uh, for us, Solid Waste, we, we moving on. We are here at the Land cottage trying to make space, so, uh, again, if y'all would keep in mind that we're close here.
Okay. Mr. Maron.
Sir.
I know it's just an informational item, but can we read off your informational item number two while Mr. Fonda's here?
Sure. Let me find where my report is, Commissioner, I'll be glad to read it out for you.
I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine, actually, I was gonna read this out when John was, was up at the, at the podium, but,
Okay.
Uh, just to remind all the Commissioners that the, um, St. George Island Bathroom Ribbon Cutting Ceremony is, uh, for the new St. George Island bathrooms, scheduled for Tuesday, April twentieth, that's your next meeting at two o'clock. So, that your next meeting, two o'clock in the afternoon, is the ribbon cutting ceremony.
Sounds good. Uh, Fonda, I want to ask you a quick question while we're still here.
Yes, sir.
I know that it's been probably, I don't know, close to a year, we redid all the, uh, basketball court on the island, resurfaced it.
Yes.
At the end of the day, I was noticing that one of the goals seems to be unusable. It's just all jacked up and ain't straight at all. Uh, what do we need to see about doing to get those goals replaced?
Uh, waiting on the, and we have goals for East Point and St. George Island, uh, board, just waiting.
Okay. Sounds good. I, I went in aware, that's why I was asking.
Yes, no problem.
Okay. Anyone else have something for Mr. Davis while he's here with us?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, uh, thank you, Mr. Davis, for your work and the Parks and Rec crew work at Roman Park with the upgrade to the basketball court and the lights and the basketball goals that are gonna be replaced. Um, it is open today, so they'll be able to start going out and enjoying it. I just wanna extend my appreciation for, for getting that done. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
Yeah. Commissioner Ward, that's a, that basketball court is used quite a deal more than people sometimes recognize.
It is.
It really is.
Uh, every day I go by there and see people out there playing basketball, so.
Yeah, it's a good thing. Thank you, Fonda.
Okay. There's, uh, that's it, that's all I have for you all.
All right, we appreciate your work, appreciate you and your crew for everything you do for the county, thank you.
Yes, sir, I will let them know, thank you all.
Yes, sir. All right, up next, Ms. Pam Brunel, our Emergency Management Director.
Pam sent me a, uh, message this morning, Commissioner, she is in a class and Jennifer is in a pod.
Yep.
And so, I've asked Mr. Parrish to see if he has any knowledge of the, to open up the Hurricane Loss Mitigation Program bid packets, where there are two. And, um, uh, I see in her report, she did not list the committee, which I know Attorney Sheila prefers that we have on record, the committee is gonna be reviewing these, so, uh...
I mean, I, I, I don't know, she said this is a, this is the contractor's decision in wind retrofitting of housing in Franklin County. I mean, we can either open them or we can just keep them closed until she's here at the next meeting, I don't know if we're gonna go on there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Opening the bids is just a ministerial act, though, did, did Ms. Brunel ask us to defer action this morning?
No, she asked us to go ahead and open them.
Uh, and Commissioners, just for the record, um, I, I was notified last week that one of these hurricane mitigation loss bids was received in the mail at the clerk's office and was inadvertently opened. The, the envelope was open, but the contents were not pulled out. The, they, the office contacted me and I instructed them to reseal, uh, the bid, so it will be opened here this morning, but I didn't wanna get on the record that there was, I mean, these, these things just happen on occasion. Uh, it's just an, an accident in processing, an awful lot of paperwork in the clerk's office. Uh, and most often what happens is, is the, the envelopes are not properly sealed, or, excuse me, notated on the outside that it's a bid. Uh, and that's usually the cause of these things being open, but I didn't wanna get on, on the record that one of the, and I don't even know which one it is, but one of them was opened and resealed at my direction to be opened here at the meeting and, and publicly read out loud.
And ask, uh, actually, Commissioners, Attorney Sheila, um, hey, Commissioner, good morning. Um, uh, Tracy Busby just, just sent me, she's on the committee, so it's her, Pam, and Jennifer that's, that's the committee. So, we, we could stick that. Sent me a, I'm sorry, she sent me a message.
So, the opening of these bid packets, is that something? Is that something, we don't have to vote on that, do we?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just, I just wanna put on the record-
Okay.
-that it was inadvertently opened, but, uh, it was, you know, resealed in a timely fashion, and, and the information was not pulled out and read, and it's not been publicly published until this morning.
Okay. So, let's open some bids.
There are two, two bids. So, this one is, uh, first one we're opening is from Florida Retrofits, Inc., out of Palm Bay, Florida. Uh, Florida Retrofits, Inc., and, uh... Now, is this our, is there, is there a bid in here? This is, um, these are individual projects, so this, this is all kind of...
And just for the record, that was the one, uh, the one that Mr. Parrish was looking at now, is the one that was resealed in the envelope. I'm looking for a summary here.
Let me, uh, hey, Tracy, I see you on the line for another matter. Would you mind if you unmute and explain exactly what these packets are, telling me how much you know about them?
Am I looking for a summary bid, remember?
Go ahead, Tracy, I see you unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, what the, um, H L M P, there's actually homeowners that submitted the applications to get their houses completed, and what the bid packet is, it's all of those homeowners' homes that have had the inspection, but now we need the price for the contractor to turn into the state to determine if the B C A meets, um, the state's level to then go ahead and go forward with the construction. So, if, I heard someone say they saw individual bids, that's because it's individual homes, but there should be a page that kind of calculates all of them. Let me, I'll send you like what the bid looks like, Michael, if you want, but there should be an actual page that shows-
Like a summary page, basically?
Like, yeah, the different homeowners, and there should be about twelve or thirteen. Let me pick up real quick.
They didn't fill them out.
There is, there is about twelve or thirteen here, but I, there, I, I, I've gone through all the loose leak pages and there's no summary for all of the bids, or, or, let's say, there's like thirteen or fourteen, and they're, you know, they're all variety of prices, this one's fourteen thousand.
Oh, there it is.
No, that's, that's just one house.
Oh, that's for each house.
That's each house.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-eight thousand.
Mr. Chairman, in that case, my recommendation, just read the name of the, the submitter into the record, and then that will be one of the two bids that are submitted to the review committee to determine compliance and a recommendation back to this board.
Okay. Cause they have to review it anyway.
Yes.
Cause there are like fourteen individual prices here, and I don't see a summary. So, this, the one I'm opening and looking at is from Florida Retrofits, Inc., out of Palm Bay, Florida.
Okay.
Good tabulation. That's, that's a score, isn't it?
That's a score.
Yep. That's all part of the package, so you're right now. And the second one is open already, it's right here. All right, so the second one is from Hydra Engineering and Construction out of Crawfordville, Florida. Hydra Engineering and Construction.
But speaking to my gal, I'm sorry.
Hydra, Hydra Engineering and Construction out of Crawfordville, Florida. No, I'd say, I'm just gonna CD.
My recommendation would be a motion to turn these, is there any other bids?
No, those are the only two bids. And again, this does not appear to have a summary for all the different, all the different prices, in fact, they own.
Mr. Chairman, my recommendation would be a, a motion by the board directing that these two, uh, submitters be turned over to the committee, which consists of the members, if Mr. Maron put on the, the record earlier.
Okay. All right, so pleasure the board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All right, we're turning this over to the review committee of Ms. Pam, Ms. Jennifer, and Ms. Tracy.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, five-o.
All right, Tracy, thank you very much. We're, we're gonna go ahead and move on, just forward him onto the committee.
Okay.
And, uh, the rest of her stuff was informational, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, relative to the Emergency Management Director and her duties in our county, um, I attended the, uh, Weems Memorial Hospital Board Meeting last Thursday morning, and, uh, Dr. Pat Conrad, the head of the Emergency Department at the hospital, made a specific request for us to consider, um, having some sort of authority or passing an ordinance that allows Weems Memorial Hospital to remain open during storm events in this county. Um, apparently, in the past, it has actually closed, and he feels that, um, that's not a service to our folks and wants us to consider, uh, leaving the emergency room open during these times of events. So, I was thinking, um, perhaps we could get together, uh, Dr. Conrad and, um, Pam Brunel and a couple of other personalities in our county and talk this over and perhaps consider some sort of an ordinance if it's appropriate.
Mr. Chairman.
What were we thinking?
On that, only problem is, at a certain category, the state take over, and they, they call down and tell them to close it well.
I see, do they?
At, at all, we don't, we don't make that determination. I mean, we keep it open, but if the state says close it,
I see.
We gotta do what they say.
I didn't know that, okay.
Do agree that might be worth looking into.
Reaffirm that then and make sure-
Yeah.
Because of the unique rural focus of this hospital, I think we oughta look into it and just confirm.
I'd rather see it open, too, but we get...
Let's see if we can do something, there may be an ex, potential exception.
Yeah. There might be, I, I think what we might run into also, Commissioner Bolt, is once an evacuation order's been given again, like, uh, Commissioner Lockwood's saying, if it's a category-three storm, category-four storm, it's hard to ask people to still be here when everybody else is being told to leave.
Surely.
You know what I mean, that's-
Yeah, I do.
That's, you know.
Commissioner, one of the problems is gonna be, the building doesn't need hurricane code, you know, it's construction standards.
Sure.
Exactly, before we seen damage from a hurricane, when the roof got torn off on the last hurricane-
Yeah.
-by blowing around, so-
Yeah.
That, that's probably the issue, is the building doesn't, you're asking people to stay in a building that doesn't, isn't hurricane.
Understood, okay. Thank you.
But, good thought, thank you, Commissioner Bolt.
Okay.
Uh, is there any report from Mr. Lovstrand, is he on the line?
Yes, yes, he is, sir.
I just wasn't sure. All right, so, up next, Mr. Eric Lovstrand, Extension Office Director.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, I don't have any action items for the board this morning. So, if you have any questions on anything in my report, I'd be happy to discuss that.
I would like to highlight, Mr. Eric, while you're here, uh, item number four in your informational items. I know that you guys have already been doing some stuff to purchase archery equipment for your four-H youth, and you got citizen donations for that, and the, the Shooting Sports Club meeting, uh, the first one's coming up to encourage, you know, youth to come to that, so I, I wanna make sure and mention it down publicly in case somebody has it read through our agenda or know what's going on, um, that they can still try, they still have time to contact Ms. Michelle Gray, according to your report,
Yes.
At eight-five-oh-two-one-oh-three-two-seven-seven, and it's gonna be at two o'clock on this Saturday, or not this Saturday, a week from Saturday.
Seventeenth, April seventeenth, yes.
Yes, so, I, I think that's a good thing, uh, having grown up in a home where we were taught how to respect, uh, guns at an early age, what they were for and what they weren't for. I think it's good to have our kids exposed to being not only around a gun, but being, understanding that they are something serious to have in your hand, so.
Yeah, and the initial kickoff, um, aspect that they'll be working on is, is the archery program, I believe.
Right.
I don't believe they'll be actually doing any live firing with firearms at this stage.
It might be a while till it's live fire, but again, it's better to be safe than sorry, but I just think it's another benefit to the children in our communities that maybe the community doesn't know about. Anyone else have something for Mr. Eric while he's here? Mr. Eric, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, sir. Uh, next, Ms. Whitney Roundtree, our Library Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have no action items today, but I would like to take the time to publicly thank our, um, citizen support organization, the Friends of the Franklin County Public Library. Um, if you haven't had a chance, um, next time you pass through Carabelle, take a look at the library. Um, they provided the funds and the volunteer labor for a beautification project on the landscaping. Um, they replenished the rock, uh, the bark, and added a few new plants, and, um, they really got it looking nice out there, so I really appreciate their efforts and their support. Um, other than that, any questions regarding my report?
Uh, no, I would like to, Ms. Whitney, to take, if you would, take the time to read into the record and for the public that might be watching the meeting about number three on your report.
Oh, yes, uh, whoa, hold on. Number three, oh, yes, uh, we do have representatives from Rebuild Florida. Um, so, anyone who still needs assistance from Hurricane Michael, they'll be alternating locations, so they will be at the, um, let's see, the East Point Library so they will be at the, let's see, the East Point Library on April seventh and the twenty-first, and they will be at the Carabelle Library, April fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, and they're here pretty much all day, nine thirty to four thirty. You don't need an appointment, just come on in, and they'll see if they can help you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope everyone had a happy Easter.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, we did. Anyone else have something for Ms. Whitney, while we're here?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can we be sure that we complement the notification to the public about Rebuild of Florida being in our area by using the electronic signs that are available on the highways to tell folks when these venues are occurring?
Yes, I think they've already been doing that. I know at least, the other week, I seen it in East Point. The last time they were in East Point, I seen it on the side of ninety-eight, kinda directing people how to go there.
Okay, okay.
Yes. But, but that is something we're doing, correct?
Yes.
Utilizing the signs so people are aware.
Consistent? Okay, good.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Whitney.
Thank you. Take care.
All right. All right, so now we're gonna open some RFQ, RFP bid opening for the Buddy Ward Memorial Reef.
Yeah, go ahead, Rep. If you read that, I'll open it up.
Okay, Commissioner, I'm just gonna skip around.
A little bit.
My bad. I'm sorry. Yeah, she gets louder. Go ahead.
Aaron, before you start beginning, Commissioners, just for the record, this is another one of those bids that came in that was insufficiently marked as being a bid on the outside. I know it was opened, I was notified, I talked to the deputy clerk and the clerk. Nothing was pulled out, no one's read any of the bids, they were resealed and brought to you here today, and they're going to be open and read publicly today, but just wanted to get that on the record. I think we only have the one bid, so I don't have to identify the person.
Okay. Go ahead, Aaron.
Okay, we're gonna have an RFP proposal for the Buddy Ward Artificial Reef Project. Proposals were due yesterday for the Buddy Ward Reef Project, and today, the project consists of the construction and deployment of at least twenty-five concrete prefabricated reef modules to construct three reef complexes in the Buddy Ward permit site, located approximately seven and a half nautical miles off Bob Sykes Cut. Once the proposals are open, the proposals will go to the review committee, of which we suggest having two members of the Appalachia Cola Artificial Reef Association, as they are a contributing stakeholder for the project, and one member of the FWC Artificial Reef Program. From ARA, I would like to recommend Grayson Shepherd and Bill Mudd, and from FWC, Christine Kittle, a fish, a fisheries biologist with the program. Once the proposals are turned over to the committee, a cone of silence between the members of the review committee will be in place until reviewers return their completed score sheets to me before Friday, April ninth, for the ranking to be compiled. If there is a consensus amongst the rankings, the committee and county staff will proceed with negotiations with the top-ranked proposer and bring to the board a contract for approval and ratification at your next meeting. It is recommended that the board appoint Bill Mudd, Grayson Shepherd, and Christine Kittle to the RFP Review Committee for the Buddy Ward Artificial Reef Program, and release the proposals for ranking by the committee, and we're about to open this right now. Do you see?
Thank you.
That's how you do it. Just pull it out. That's all you do.
No, we only have one.
Just let you pull it out.
Oh, okay. I thought you were the bid opener.
Times are changing.
Okay, and the RFP was David Walter, and doing business as Walter Marine. And there was not, they're not gonna have a price.
Okay.
That's it? Yep.
Where are they located at?
They're located at Orange Beach, Alabama.
Okay. All right, so pleasure to the board to adopt this review committee?
I'd make a recommendation that we adopt the three names for the committee, as presented by Ms. Erin Griffin.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, Jessica. Thank you, Aaron. Up next, TDC Administrator John Solomon, report.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Solomon, TDC Director. One thing I would like to mention that I think found us a little humble about, but we wanted, the TDC wanted to thank the Parks and Rec and Fonda Davis for putting the new Moby mat in, at Carabelle Beach. It received numerous amounts of fanfare and appreciation for that being added to the beach in Carabelle, so we wanted to thank the Parks and Rec and Fonda for getting that done in such a timely manner.
Thank you, John.
I have one thing on my, on the information item, and then also, another thing that's brought to my attention today. For the information, the TDC collections, the month of January of 2021, are a hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and eleven cents. Compared to January of 2020, it was fifty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. That's an increase of sixty-one thousand dollars and three hundred and seven and eighty-six cents. Represents a hundred and twelve point sixty-five percent increase over the previous year. January 2020 was the highest ever collected in that, in the month of January, and this is also the largest increase in one month percentage-wise the TDC has ever seen in collections. I know I had mentioned in the past that they're here and they're coming, and it, the next couple of months are looking similar to this. We have had a surge in tourism, and I think it's a wonderful thing because it's providing the economy for this community to survive, so wanted to make sure that the board was aware of those collections coming in. The other thing is, it's brought to my attention that we have, the county does, has a, an item, a cannon, on loan to the Maritime Museum here in Appalachia Cola that has been closed for the last couple of years, and wanted to see if I could get the county to ask for that cannon to go into the new Maritime Heritage Museum that we're, will be opening in the near future.
Where's the other one at currently?
It's currently at the Maritime History Museum here in Appalachia Cola.
Okay. Is that?
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Go ahead.
I became aware when I read the paper that, that the county is looking for, I guess, artifacts that are related to maritime for our own history, and of course, I also knew that from being in the meeting. That led me to recall that we had placed on loan back in, I think it was 2013, I think it's a Signal Flare Cannon, it's a really neat thing, it's on wheels, it's brass, and we've made it on loan to the Appalachia Cola Maritime Museum, and I understood that it had been closed since Hurricane Michael, and since we're gathering artifacts, I brought this to the attention of the TDC Director, Mr. Solomon, and told him if he thought that would be a good addition for our museum, that the lease agreement does provide for us to recall that item on loan, and we can display it at our own open museum. So I guess he decided he wanted it, so.
Okay. So we're just basically asking to get that back so we can display it ourselves?
Right. Either myself or Mr. Moron can send a letter to the Maritime Museum with a copy of the lease, saying, you know, we'd like to recall it for the following reasons, assuming that's the board's action here this morning.
Okay. So is that something we would need to take a motion and vote on?
Yes, sir, this needs to be board action.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. I have one, one discussion item. John, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Since it is truly administrative in nature, I do think we need to vote on it today and go ahead and move forward. So I'm in agreement with, with us making this decision here today, should the board choose to vote to do so. Any more discussion before we vote?
Yeah, if we got anything else, loan, any movement here, loan, as we know of.
Not that I'm aware of, Commissioner Lockley.
Okay.
We can check with Mr. Carrigan, he would probably be the only other person.
I appreciate that's the only thing. I'm with Mr. Schu, as I recall, when I was here when that was going on, that was the only thing. The cannon used to be in the, in the upper story of the armory. It was a small, as Mr. Schu said, a signal cannon, it's not a great big, you know, Howitzer, just, you know, something. But it's still, it's ours, and we need to be able to display somewhere else.
The reason I was asking, if we opened it up in the museum, and we got some other.
Oh, yes, sir.
He didn't mean just, he meant anything else.
Oh, of course, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I was asking about anything, so if we can.
Richard and Mr. Carrigan, I'll find out.
Yeah, yeah. It may be the, I want to go Historical Society, has some stuff they want to look.
Yeah, that's true.
Good point.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, Jessica and John. Commissioners, why, why Mr. Solomon's here, I, I want to take a minute to mention something. So he and I, I, I dragged him into it because he's our TDC Administrator. He and I went specifically to St. George Island in the last couple of weeks to look at some of our beach accesses, where we're putting the new signs that Mr. Davis was talking about earlier, and, and I had a thought of trying to do something different at our beach accesses. I don't know that we're gonna be able to do them at all of them, but that's something I'll talk about later, but I didn't want to mention it because Mr. Solomon helped me do the research for it, so I'm tagging him with it, whether he likes it or not. But, you know, but it is something I think that could be positive for the residents of the county, and that's what we're trying to do here at this board level, and I get to enjoy doing, as I serve you and the county on the TDC Board, to try to make things better. So I wanted to say all that to say, John, thank you for being involved in the process.
Yes, sir. Well, making sure our, our residents and our visitors have an enjoyable time here on Forgotten Coast, that's our job, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Anyone else have something for Mr. Solomon, while he's here?
I noticed in the paper, John, that there was a advertisement for the app for the Forgotten Coast, and how you had this little app system there that you could just aim your phone at and open up the Forgotten Coast app, and it was right in the paper, half-page display. I really liked that.
Yes, sir. We've, we're, we, we, we launched the app in November for a reason, to get it time to work the bugs out. So when we got to the spring, we could actually hit with an advertising campaign, and we have billboard, we have, it's been in a couple of magazines, every one of our ads going, and anything that we're doing has a download the Forgotten Coast mobile app. And right now, I checked yesterday, we had right at two thousand users of the app right now, so that's very positive, up about eleven hundred from two weeks ago, so.
That's right. Thank you, John.
Yes.
We appreciate it.
Y'all have a wonderful day.
You as well.
Mr. Chairman, I have to ask for this, and it's early in the meeting, could I ask you guys to do a break? Apparently, I lost the Wi-Fi, so by losing the Wi-Fi, I lost all the other connections for the other views. And I don't want to be disruptive to keep walking around trying to get it back on.
That's fine.
If you guys give me five minutes, I think I should be able to get it back on.
So we're gonna take a recess.
Thank you.
Yep.
Another question is for newly moms. Is it safe to nurse if I think I have coronavirus?
There have been no studies to date proving that the virus is transmitted by breast milk. There's been no case study that's come out yet showing that it has been transmitted by breast milk, so it's probably safe. Here's the problem. If you're breastfeeding, you're within six feet of the baby. If you have COVID-19, the respiratory droplets are still gonna be on the baby. So what the American Academy of Pediatrics is recommending right now is that if a mom is infected or is seriously concerned she was infected, that she pumps the breast milk and has someone else feed it to the baby. And then we go back to those seventy-two hours without a fever, or a full seven days before the start of symptoms, before there's close contact with the baby again. I realize in the neonatal period, that's not optimum for the baby, but it's gonna be the safest thing.
We would like to welcome you to Florida's Forgotten Coast. We hope you enjoy your stay here in Franklin County. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind you of some of our safety guidelines for our beautiful beaches.
Here on the Forgotten Coast, we love pets. Please observe our lease laws on the beaches and on other public places.
When visiting Franklin County beaches, please get aware of the beach flags and conditions. You can download the Forgotten Coast mobile app for the most recent conditions.
It is very important to us here in Franklin County that we make all our beaches accessible to everyone. We have placed Moby masks at different assets throughout the county. We plan to add more the coming year.
Franklin County has some of the most beautiful beaches in Florida. Let's keep it that way. Remember, remove all your trash before you leave and leave only footprints.
We welcome you to enjoy our beaches, but at the end of the day, please remember to remove all your beach gear before nine PM. Remember, May through October, we have other visitors here, the sea turtles, so we need to keep our lights off at night on the beaches as well.
Your safety is important to us, so please remember, when visiting our beautiful beaches, you're swimming at your own risk, as we do not have lifeguards on duty.
We hope you enjoy your stay here, but please remember, no glass bottles on our beaches.
When visiting our area, please park in designated parking places only. Don't park in the county right-of-way or on private property without permission.
Go to florida'sforgottencoast.com backslash beach safety for a complete list of county and beach ordinances and safety rules.
Thank you.
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 Thank you for visiting Florida's Forgotten Coast. Help us keep our beaches as beautiful as they are today for future visitors and residents.
ARPRC, Ms. Caroline Smith has a presentation for us about a draft proposal for code enforcement public workshops in Franklin County. Good morning, Caroline.
Good morning. Hey, I'm Caroline Smith with the Appalachia Regional Planning Council. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board this morning. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Before I keep going?
Yep.
Okay, great. So I am, I'm pleased to be able to share this draft proposal on a code enforcement workshop series that we have, and I understand you all have a copy of it as well.
Yes.
So I think I'll, I won't share my screen if that's the case, but I'd just like to briefly highlight some of the main points of the proposal and then answer any questions you may have. Essentially, so as the ARPRC technical assistance provider to Franklin County, we'd really like to assist with your ongoing code enforcement discussions by having a workshop series in which we would facilitate a series of five workshops in the unincorporated areas of Franklin County to share some kind of best practices from similar communities regarding code enforcement and, most importantly, to take public comment on how, how residents in general are feeling about code enforcement, what they'd like to see, what they might be concerned about, and to compile all this public input into a summary report that we would then present to the board. So it would be around a, kind of a summertime project compacted to a few, a few months so that you would have the information sooner than later. The timeline that we proposed would be starting around June 1st this year and concluding around the end of September. It's a $6,000 project proposal, which would cover all staff salary, time, and travel, and workshop materials in order to fulfill the different components of the proposal. And at the end of the day, the kind of ultimate outcome, in our opinion, would be that you would have in front of you kind of a highlighted, just an overview of how the county is, is feeling about code enforcement so that as you move forward with these discussions, you have kind of all the public comment laid out in front of you to, for the decision-making process. So that's kind of the overview. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a quick.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lock.
Oh, do you, y'all do this all the time, right?
Yes, we, well, we have not yet done a code enforcement specific project. This part would be new to us, but we do, do a variety of different planning projects, including kind of in the realm of growth management, which would be kind of the umbrella that code enforcement would fall under.
I guess my question, well, my question would be, I don't, if you take a number over the state, can you, is there any way we can find out how many people don't have code enforcement, how many people do, how many counties?
Oh, yeah, that's definitely something that we could find out, and we've also, in the project proposal, factored in some time for research to figure out some of those questions, so that we'd come into it very well-prepared. And I would say too, so even though we are kind of more new to code enforcement in particular, we do have experience with growth management and we have a lot of experience with workshop facilitation and kind of public workshops, so if that, if that's helpful.
Yeah, mainly, mainly I want to deal with the county kind of small like a.
Thank you.
Caroline, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Of these five public workshops, are all of these going to be held in person? Are there going to be any Zoom capability? How's that going to work?
Oh, that's a good question.
It doesn't have to be anyway.
Well, they could, they could be purely held in person, but we could also set up kind of a hybrid format so that was a little similar to the meeting today, so that we would have a call-in option for folks who were not able to attend in person.
Right.
That's, that's probably a really good idea. And Caroline, if you have to, you know, I'll let you guys use our Zoom account to set up, you know, the call-ins or whatever, because I think.
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah, because I think a lot of people in our community, Mr. Chairman, are getting accustomed to Zoom now, and so I don't think it's going anywhere. So like Caroline referred to, from now on, everything is probably going to be hybrid with most meetings that we have, so, yeah.
But I do like the component that some, that some of it will be live, public.
Yes.
Because there might be those that either don't have the access to Zoom or don't have the access to enough broadband speed, actually.
There you go.
None of them, so I do think that does need to have, if it requires a bigger meeting space, distancing, whatever it requires to move forward, I do think there needs to be public allowed in the meeting or in the workshops.
Right.
Yes.
I have a question between the young lady here and county staff. How will this be advertised to let the public know? Because you put it in the paper, some people don't read the paper. Will it be on the county website?
Yes.
Will it be, get public, Oyster Radio, do public service announcements? Because a lot of people listen to the radio.
Yes.
I mean, how will it all be advertised to get the maximum amount of public input?
Commissioner, you just stated all three. The county website, of course, with all the meetings listed, it'll be posted up front as they open up the page, it'll be hard to find. And then I will ask Oyster Radio to basically use them as PSAs, you know, similar to how they're doing with the rebuild project too, you know? That's on social media, you know, so yes, so we'll try our best to get it out there as much as possible.
And they'll have it on social media as well.
And one, one more just statement, that as these meetings are advertised and dates are established, that each commissioner attend the workshop.
Yes.
So they can hear their, the concerns of their constituency, right?
Yes.
I, I know I would like to attend the one held in Appalachia Cola to, so I can understand how the public feels about code enforcement and exactly what they expect and kind of gives you a good perspective of what's happening in your district and how the people feel in your district.
Sure.
And Michael, since we're talking about this, I, I'm, maybe I shouldn't assume this, I'm understanding as far as the meeting spaces, the one for Appalachia would probably be held here.
Yes.
The one for East Point could be held at the fire department, on the island, potentially at the civic club meeting room, and Caribou at City Hall, you know what I mean?
Yes.
So we need to make sure we reach out to all these and make sure that they're good with us using the meeting spaces and the times free and all that kind of stuff.
Yes, I'll work with Caroline on making sure. Locally, I'll help with setting up the, the locations and the times and the places.
Me myself personally, you know, I think code enforcement will be a good thing because all you're doing is, we got laws, we, we make laws, I mean, law come through here, whatever the county said a law is. All that code enforcement man is doing is making sure people not breaking the law, just like a policeman, really. I mean, the light police would break.
Something, yes, sir.
If they take that, the big people do right, then you won't have much problem. We got, we got a few problems out there where people not doing what they supposed to do
or doing things that's not right, but they know somebody checking, you'll get a better
response, I think.
I agree with that statement. Commissioner Lock.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, Caroline, this is Commissioner Ward, District 5. Thank you for being here today. Just a note, I know a lot of people say, well, why would we need to, to pay this amount of money to have somebody tell us how to do code enforcement? Well, I, I've tried to research it on my own, to my best knowledge and, and, you know, reaching out to people. I have constituents contact me all the time. Most of my calls are, like I said before, related to code enforcement, but I feel that this, the ARPRC doing this takes us out of it altogether as commissioners, because we don't want to overreach our authority. In addition, I feel like it would, as, as it states here, they're going to coordinate with other communities and get data that's been compiled, how other communities, as Commissioner Lockley said, are smaller rural communities, to kind of get a basis on how they do it and, and how, if we can base it, how they, how, say, Walcol or Gulf County do code enforcement, maybe that's how we can do it and try to bring all these brains together and figure out the best way to facilitate this. And I'll give you an example, I was, I wrote out with the building inspector, Mr. Patterson, yesterday in my district because he's got a, it's called a Graceland shed. And this person bought this property, they didn't get a permit, they put this shed on this property and it is, it does not meet code. The roofing does not meet code. So if a hurricane comes, blows this Graceland shed away, then, then what? So I feel like, as Commissioner Lockley said, it's not really about being mean or being jerks or being inappropriate about letting people do what they want with their property. It's about really kind of safety, safety in addition to just doing the right thing as well. So that's my opinion.
Well, at the end of the day, Commissioner, the codes and the zoning codes and ordinances and things we have, especially as they pertain to the building of buildings, they are for safety. There is a standard of practice, there is a guideline to follow, so we know for sure if there is another hurricane like Michael, at least our residents stand a chance that they're still going to have something to come back to because it was built properly and not just, you know, and I've had this discussion, I won't go into it, with a lot of people thinking that somehow, you know, the permits are all about just the county making more money, but no, it's about overseeing that things are done properly and in order so everyone is protected the most. That's all we're trying to accomplish. And I think too, just to highlight, and I'm not trying to interject too much here, the reason we're doing public workshops across the county, I would imagine, you know, again, I might be assuming, if we had one public workshop about code enforcement, there's not a building in this county big enough to house everybody, because there would be people wanting to speak on this issue. So I think this is one of the, I really like the idea of doing it across the county and this board getting input from its citizens, not just here in the meeting room, so we know the actions we take reflect the people we've been voted to serve, so. I just wanted to highlight that.
So code enforcement, Commissioners, as you all know, means different things, different people in this county. And so that's one of the reasons for having it spread across the county at different locations, because I think, you know, what you're going to hear at one spot is going to be a totally different complaint at another spot. The only thing I could see, and I'm going to give Caroline a little heads up, is RVs and campers. I think that might be a common denominator among all the, the locations that we have and that, for that, they might have to do some, ARPRC might have to do some additional research as to how other counties are doing it. But I think, you know, I'm sure like in commi, even within like the State Commission of both districts, within your district, you're probably going to have two opposite views of what code enforcement is or what they want the county to do, sir. So that's another big reason for spreading it across the county. So you don't, everybody doesn't get lost in the, in the mass gathering, you know, you don't really hear some particular, certain particular feelings about code enforcement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Caroline, thank you for joining us this morning. I'm Bert Bolt with Commissioner for District 2, and you, you'll think of us at Alligator Point and Landark Village and that area. I wanted to echo what my fellow Commissioners have said, particularly for what I call outcome in your report. Surely share with us comparables of what you're finding in other counties of similar size to us in population, but also some guidelines on how you do it, based on, surely you're going to give us summaries of the people and what the folks feel like. But then, I, I really believe we need a recipe and a roadmap on how to design a quality growth management compliance system. And, and it looks not only at buildings and structures and so on, but it also looks at the general aesthetics of our community as well. And I believe, in summary, I would very much like to see a how you do it recipe outcome report specifically customized to Franklin County.
I appreciate that, thank you. Yeah, and I, I will say, so I, I think that's very important as well, and something that we had in mind that might be either discussion for now or later would be if that roadmap piece should be a joint part of this proposal or maybe a separate one that follows, if only because with this proposal, we were hoping to, I suppose, maintain kind of a neutral third-party approach as much as possible because we are seeking so much public input. And then as we kind of would transition towards the roadmap phase, we would be required to take at least a few, you know, positions with kind of coming up with some, with some options. So I'd be open to kind of your input as far as what you think would be best, just so that we, we are able to enter the workshops as kind of a neutral party so that we're not, you know, perceived as being for or against a certain kind of code enforcement. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Caroline, it, it does make sense. The thing I like about that is, I, I think our, our people, our residents need to understand and know that the whole reason these workshops are happening is because the board has directed for them to happen. So, so the board is looking at taking steps, whatever they might be, for code enforcement. And I also agree that of ARPRC staff remaining neutral, because at the end of the day, the policy decisions are, are the responsibility of this Board of County Commissioners. So I do, I do agree with that. Now, might, they include some recommendations, we can discuss that at a later time, I think, when we get more of the stuff in hand and, and, you know, what that might entail or require. I think that's a discussion for later. Right now, we're on a fact-finding mission because I think this board has expressed interest to move forward with this kind of project.
Thank you very much. Does, are there any other questions that I can answer at this time?
Well, another thing is this, people be watching people.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, they do. You set a mouth for it, Commissioner.
When you look, when you look at it, they either gonna, when you got a code enforcement there, I mean, you got an office, and he doing what he supposed to do, people gonna, don't you think that person down the road not looking and they goes there, well, the code enforcement gonna get you if you gonna, if you don't do right? Or either they gonna say, they let what you call them get away with it, and I'm gonna try it too.
Yeah.
So if you want it done right, you just got to do what we got to do with it. We not being hard on the people, we just, we doing more protecting the people than we doing being hard on them. You can do what you want as long as it's by the code and it's right.
Yes.
But you, if a building calls for a two by six, whoa, and they want to cut costs and put a two before it, they'll do it if they can get away, but if they know that man gonna check it, they gonna do right.
Oh, yeah. Well, and two, there's also a discussion right now, Commissioner Lockley, at the legislative level, because the, the legislators are in session, they're talking about passing or amending the law or passing a law, particularly for code enforcement. particularly for code enforcement, that will not allow anybody to be anonymous in their complaint anymore. So if I want to make a complaint on you, you would get to know who's making the complaint. So that, that, that might eventually affect us if this board does adopt something on code enforcement. If they pass. So. Anyone else have any questions for Ms. Caroline?
So if the board has any questions, didn't want any changes to the proposal, if it's good, you could go ahead and accept that by motion today so they could start setting a timeline for the project. And you can start working to schedule days and times and locations, et cetera, et cetera.
Before we, before we vote, I will say, I, I took it upon myself as your chairman and your representative on the ARPC board to talk to Mr. Chris Rito, Executive Director, ARPC, about this timeline. The issue is, it's a good issue, the Regional Planning Council is really doing a lot of work right now, not just in Franklin County, but all the other eight counties in our nine-county region. Some of those, like the project they're currently doing for East Point Infra Care Bell with Competitive Florida, actually wrap up in May, so they're, they're going to be really involved in that, because it's some of the same staff that'll be doing this work for the county. So that's why it's a June to September timeline. I know that's not ideal for the board, as far as our budget discussions go, but we might have to put, be ready to put some kind of placeholder in place for our budgetary discussions and then see how it works out afterwards, because we can always reduce funds from our budget, from what we tend to approve. But we cannot add after we tend to approve our budget. So I just want to make sure the board's aware of that discussion as well.
So move.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt, to move forward with these public workshops about code enforcement in Franklin County. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? It's a five oh vote. Jessica and Caroline.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Talk to you soon.
Thank you. Talk to you soon.
All right. Up next is Mr. John Collins from AVCON with an update for the Commission.
Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today and give you an update on the, the new airport fuel farm project. As you're probably aware, you know, Alan Peters and Jason Puckett worked really hard with Triumph to procure Triumph funding to replace the existing fuel farm at the airport. And really, the goal with this project is, number one, the existing fuel farm is pretty old. The equipment, you know, a couple decades old, and another credit card machine, how, how, how pilots get fuel from the tanks is no longer supported by the manufacturer, so if they have any issues, they've got to go out there and replace the whole system. So that, that's a big part of it. But also Triumph, they really viewed this as a sustainability component for our region during hurricanes. They want to make sure that if a hurricane comes through like, like, you know, not too long ago, and the airport loses power, that the, the fuel farm is still open, because as you, as you were, the Coast Guard used at West Cola Region with Airport quite a bit during the, during hurricanes. And so, you know, the Triumph really wanted to make sure that we had 24-hour fuel even without, without power at the airport. So those are all reasons why, why this project is going forward at the airport. So what I'd like to do is share my screen, and make sure I got the right one here. All right. Can you, can everybody see the, my screen with the aerial of the airport?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Okay. What I'd like to do is, there's three different locations that we're looking at for the fuel farm. And really, we wanted to work with the county and look at all the options that are out there right now, just to make sure that we, the ultimate option that's selected has been thought through, because, you know, we're, we're putting a bunch of money in this. You don't want to move it unless you already put it in. So we, we've got a few different exhibits I just want to go through to explain our thought process. And we did have several meetings with Andrew Hartman, with Centric Aviation, the FBO operator at the airport. He, he's responsible for, like, maintaining the existing fuel farm, delivering all the fuel to it, operating it. But he's working with the fuel farm on a, on a daily basis. So Andrew has been heavily involved with this coordination. Of course, Jason Puckett, airport manager, has been involved. Alan Pierce, Michael Moreau, and also in the last, in the most recent meeting, Aaron Grifith, the county was involved, so. You know, we, we'd be coordinating, you know, several times over the last month and a half or so to make sure that we, we've looked at all the options. But, so again, there's, there's three options. Option one is right over here, kind of right by the FBO office, and we'll, we'll zoom into it here in just a few minutes. But just from a high-level perspective, option one is right here, is right by the gate, the, the main gate that you use to get onto the apron. Option two is back over here, right next to the existing fuel farm. So right now, it's kind of hard to see in the exhibit, but the existing fuel farm is right on the right-hand side of the box. So this option is put right next to the existing fuel farm, so all the, you have the same process, it's fuel delivery, pilots, you know, it's the same place. There's certainly some pros and cons to this location. Option three is right in between the FBO hangar and, there's another box hangar, it's about eighty by eighty hangar to the east of the FBO hangar, it's right in the middle, in this area. So really, two over here on the main apron and one back over here where in the existing location. So option one, when we were looking at this, we wanted to look at options where you actually, because, you know, once or twice a month, you're going to have a fuel delivery. And right now, if I go back to this main screen, right now, the fuel trucks, when they come onto the airport, they actually have to come on the apron and travel down the apron to get to the fuel farm, offload, and then come back, come back out. And really, at airports, you want to minimize the amount of time that your fuel trucks, really, you want to minimize any kind of activity on the apron, it's not aviation. So what we wanted to do was provide a couple of options where the fuel truck stayed completely outside of the airport fence. And so this is one option where, you know, in this option, the fuel farm is right here, as I mentioned. The, the FBO office is right here, you're probably familiar with that. So this is right across from the office, and this is one option that we talked to Andrew, you know, the, the FBO about, is there's, there's a great benefit in, in them actually having a visual on the fuel farm. Because obviously, that would restrict, you know, vandalism, you know, they can see airplanes fueling up right here. So they, they can have a better, better control over the fuel farm itself. So in this option, again, what we did was we added an access road for the fuel truck, we realigned the fence. So this is all outside to the fuel truck, but it comes up, it doesn't have to go through any, any gates. It just comes right up to the airport, pulls into this road, offloads, there's a, there's a concrete pad that he offloads on into the tanks, and then he comes out like this. Now, a downside to this option is we are impacting, this is your existing parking lot right here, so we would be impacting several spaces in this parking lot. So we would need to possibly look at ways of adding some additional, additional parking in this area. And then also, in order for the fuel truck to make this turn, we'd have to add additional pavement here on the south side of, of the road, to make that happen. So again, the, the benefits here is it keeps the truck outside of the airport fence, and it still provides the high visibility area for the fuel farm. Now, with this option, and we, we've had detailed discussions with the airport about this, is this is where the, the aircraft would actually come and fill it themselves, or self-serve. There are tie-downs that run all the way along the edge of the apron. And again, we've had detailed discussions with Centric about this. The tie-down layout really isn't very efficient for the airport. It's really one single road that runs down, down the edge of the apron. And you can do a lot more if you actually spread these out, you come up with the different tie-down configurations. You can park a lot more aircraft right by the FBO building. We're actually looking at that as part of another project, Apron Rebuilding Product at the airport, where we're not only going to be rehabbing the pavement, but we're actually going to be revising the tie-down layout by the FBO and provide additional parking and make the flow of traffic a little bit safer and more efficient at the airport. But with this layout, we would certainly need to get rid of maybe five, five or so tie-downs at a minimum here, so the aircraft can come up taxiway B, pull up, fuel up, and then get back on taxiway B. So, so this is option one A. And I, we actually have three different kinds of revisions for option one. This is the first one, we call it option one A. Also, I just want to bring your attention, this dashed line that runs through here, this is the underground airfield lighting cables. This is the airfield vault, this provides all the power for all the lighting systems at the airport. There's an underground conduit that runs through here, under the apron, over here, and then gets distributed to all the different runways and taxiways. We are avoiding that. We located the fuel farm to make sure that we weren't impacting this, because that could be pretty expensive if we do have to relocate this underground conduits running from, from the vaults, of course, out to the airfield. So that's why we have it located here. Obviously, another option could be looking at the fuel farm to the west of this conduit, but we want to keep everything as far east as possible, because this is going to be a future hangar development area. And we don't want to encroach on the ability to build hangars here on the, on the, on the north side. So that's why we're trying to try to keep everything down in the east as much as possible. Now, option one B is very similar. The fuel farm itself is in the same area, but we weren't crazy about having to impact all the parking over here with this, you know, with the previous layout, we had the trucks coming through the parking lot. So we came up with an option where the fuel truck delivery, we kept that a little bit farther away. And what you have is remote fuel, above-ground stainless steel fuel line, where the trucks will offload here, and there'll be fuel lines that take the fuel over here into the fuel tanks. So again, this, obviously, this would avoid impacts to your parking lot. But a downside to this option, this is about seventy-five thousand dollars, and we'll look here in a minute, the budget might not allow for that. But again, we just want to look, we just want to get all the options out there we can think of, that way the county can, you know, feel like, you know, certainly make an educated decision on the best option for the county. So this is option one B. Again, the fuel truck stays completely outside of the airport fence, there's no need to unlock or lock gates. And yes, this is option one B. And then, the third option for option one is, is one C. And this actually came up, we actually had our, a meeting with, you know, Jason Puckett, Andrew Hartman, and the county, where we only had option one A and one B. And what we realized after the meeting was, we really need to look at an option where we, we kind of maintain the same type of fuel delivery process, where they do come on the apron. It's not ideal, but it's certainly not, it's certainly, it's, it's okay, it's happening right now. And the fuel truck deliveries, they only occur maybe once or twice a month, from what, from what Andrew tells us, and they're only on the airfield for about an hour. So it's not a huge impact on operations at the airport, but if we, if we keep, if we actually install a fuel offload area on the apron, that cuts out about a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars from the project, which, you know, we'll get budgeted here in just a few minutes. That, that's, that's going to be important. So with this option, fuel farm, again, stays where it is, so the fuel trucks actually come on the apron, offload from this concrete pad and then circle around and, of course, you know, exit the airfield. So again, it keeps the fuel farm in the high visibility area, but it just removes the fuel offload road and all the fence modifications that were shown in the previous two exhibits. So, so those are options one A, one B, and one C. And again, that was really just focusing on the area just north of the FBO area. So, so those are those three options. Site two is right next to the existing fuel farm, as you can see here in the aerial. So really, right now, the way they work, you got the, the tanks right here, and you have your equipment, your, your pumps, your hose reels, and all your credit card machines are all kind of under this covered area. In the new layout, we've got the two tanks, you got your credit card machine kind of right here in the middle, and then the fuel trucks will offload just like they do right now. So this is, really, this is exactly what the county has right now, but just brand-new facilities, brand-new, you know, infrastructure, something that'll give you, I guess, thirty-year life, at least, out of the fuel farm, and with the associated backup generator to keep it running during hurricanes. So nothing too complicated about this one. It's just really mimicking what's out there right now. Now, site three is right, is just the southeast of the FBO hangar. Now, option one was right here. This, this is where we showed option one. Option three is really just right, right in between the FBO hangar and also the, the other box hangar, and it's right here. This was another option that we, that we looked at kind of early on in the process. There's a little corner here where it can go. The benefit of this option is it keeps the fuel, the fuel delivery access outside the fence, you know, like we talked about with option one. There is, unfortunately, with the kind of the geometry in this area, we cannot get the fuel truck pad right up against the fuel farm. So we still had to have some remote fuel lines to, you know, between the, the fuel truck and the tanks. So there is some additional cost, not only with the access road and the fence realignment, but also with getting these, this fuel line to get the fuel into the tanks. Now, this still provides the high visibility area for the fuel farm. You would still have to modify your tie-downs, but that was already something that the airport knew needed to happen. But again, this is very similar to what we might need to do with option one. So, so again, this is site three. So, so really what I want to go to now, and let me find the right, oop, make sure I share my screen here, if I can. Maybe not. Okay. Well, what I can do, I can, a big piece of this is, is the available construction budget for what we're trying to do. In this Triumph grant, we have approximately eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars for construction. And we've done, we've provided some very detailed cost estimates for each of these options. And really, the bottom line is any option that included this landside road and dispensary alignment, they were all above our construction budget. I can tell you, option, option one A, this one right here, the budget, the estimate is about nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So, you know, about a hundred and twenty thousand more, I'm sorry, it is about eighty thousand dollars more than the available budget. This one here, option two, I'm sorry, option one B, where we have these remote fuel lines, this estimate was about one point two eight million dollars. So again, compare that to the eight hundred and seventy thousand dollar available budget, that, that, that would be a challenge. Now, option one C, where you've got, you have the fuel offload on the apron, the budget for this one is about eight hundred and forty-six thousand. So that is within the budget that we had, that we had available for the project. So that's, that, that works out well here. Now, the option where we maintain the similar functionality of the existing fuel farm, the budget with this option, was actually the lowest out of, out of all the options, and the budget here is about eight hundred and twenty-four thousand. So that's certainly well within the eight hundred and seventy that we had available from Triumph. And lastly, site three, the budget here is about nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So again, about eighty thousand or so, you know, beyond the budget. And, you know, really, the goal here is to flush out any options that we have. Even if, even if we knew it might be a little more than budget, let's take a look at it, see if it might be worth investing some additional funds in it. But after, you know, multiple discussions with, you know, the airport manager, the FBO operator, and the county, the preferred alternate is actually one C. This one right here, where the fuel farm is right here, right outside the FBO building, and the fuel offload is on the apron. For, for key different reasons. You know, the, the FBO certainly loved the idea of having it right outside the gate, their, their, their windows, they can monitor it better. They just feel like they can have better control and access over the fuel farm. Plus, it is in a high-traffic area, so pilots don't have to go very far to fuel up. You know, right, again, right now, they have to go back, right now, it's down here on the, on the south end, the west end, the apron, where now it'll be right back where all the, really, all the business is happening on the apron. So, and again, the, the construction budget does, it does fit within the available budget on some Triumph. And, and again, you know, the only concern with this option was having the fuel truck out here on the apron offloading. But from what Andrew's telling us, you know, that their deliveries are once or twice a month, and they only have an hour, the fuel delivery company actually only allows an hour. If you go beyond the hour, you actually have to pay an extra fee for the fuel truck to be out there longer. So they, they get out there, they offload, and they, and they leave as quickly as possible. So there should be minimum impact to the apron. And again, we will look at revising the parking layout for these aircraft right here, to make sure that make sure that you have safe, efficient access from taxiway B, which runs right along the edge of the apron, as it can down, fill up the airplane, and then, and then come back up. But of course, the, you know, Centric has, you can see them right here on the aerial, there's two fuel trucks, so Centric can fill up their fuel trucks here and provide a full-service, you know, for the jets and stuff like that, so that's still, you know, that would not be impacted by the new fuel farm. So, again, the preferred alternative was 1C, this one right here, and if, if there's no concerns or questions with that, the next step is for us to go ahead and get the order of service for the area, the geotechnical testing, and proceed ahead with the design. We're estimating the design to take about sixty to ninety days, and so we could be available to bid this project probably mid, probably mid-summer, if I look in July timeframe, a July, August timeframe, to advertise the project for bid and get, and get bids for this project. So, I know, I know a lot of information, I'd be happy to go back and talk about any of the options with you, if you have any questions. But at this point, I'd like to open the floor for any kind of questions or comments you might have on this.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add something, so John, this is Alan, I, you know, I've listened to this thing, and I was one of the ones that has advised, John, look, I don't know what our chances are of going back to Triumph for more money, so I really encourage the board to try and stay within the existing budget, it took us such a long time to get this thing approved. I mean, it may not be a big issue to get a ten percent increase in the budget, but I don't know, and I haven't made any effort, I'll be honest, I haven't asked Triumph. But if there are options here, in my opinion, that are satisfactory to the county and to the airport community, that I'm, I would prefer that we not have to go back and ask for more money for something. So, my advice is, if we have one of these options, and Option 1C, for my very non-airport, you know, knowledge, is an adequate place for it. I realize the tie-downs are an issue that the FBO has to deal with, but I just encourage the board not to, not to seek a project that is going to require additional funding. I just don't know what Triumph is going to say. They may, they may be supportive, but I've told John that the requirement for me is to have that backup generator, generator in there, that has to be funded, because that's really what Triumph wanted. And so I need to make sure there's money in there for everything, and this includes the backup generator.
John, can I ask you again, what is, what is Option 1A, what is the monies that would be over budget?
Our estimated budget for 1A is nine-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, so it's about eighty, seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars over budget right now.
Okay, let me ask you another question. Most of that has to do with the road for the fuel truck to get to the tank?
Yeah, sure, that's correct. As you can see, there's, you're talking about, there's, you know, we have a detailed breakout, we're looking at, it's about two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-seventy-five tons of asphalt will be required for this road, and also you have this fence realignment that's not required, or at least if there was a fence, it'd be very minimal, or just 1C, this one here. But yeah, really, the big cost here is the access road. As you can see, you have a big piece here, you have a piece over here on the south side, you can park that in here. So yeah, it's about, yeah, really, your over budget about seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars. Now, and I do want to, I do want to make it clear, we put together preliminary cost estimates based off of this layout, we have not actually gone through the detailed engineering for the project, and so, you know, that estimate could, could be more or less than what we're estimating right now, but this is, you know, it's certainly, it's as detailed as it can get at this stage of the project. But that, this is our best estimate right now.
So my question is, when it comes to building this access road for Option 1A, if I use some local road paving dollars to help build that road to bring it within budget, does that make 1A a better option? I mean, I like 1A looking at all this, keeping the trucks off of the apron of the airport, which to me mitigates a lot of potential accidents, keeping that fuel truck off of the apron of the airport. You know, I'm just, I'm just, is that, is that what Option 1A provides you with?
Yes, sir. If, if, if the budget wasn't an issue here, I would, we, our recommendation is to proceed with either 1A or 1B. Really, 1A, for, that was our first, say, like, if we're going to do this right, let's do it right, and that is Option 1A. And yes, there's a big benefit of keeping the fuel truck off the apron. Number one is, you don't have, when the fuel truck shows up, he doesn't have to coordinate access to the gate, or be, you know, escorted down to the fuel farm, or be on the apron when other aircraft are operating in the area. Now, it happens now, that's the way it happens today, but again, if, if budget was not concerned, we would recommend 1A as your preferred alternative. 1B is, again, very similar, provides you the same benefits of keeping the truck off, and 1B, you would come up at Washington Street, we would get rid of the fences right here, come straight up, circle around, offload and come out. You just have, 1B, you have these additional above-ground fuel lines that add about seventy-five thousand dollars to the cost. And the nice thing about 1B is you don't impact the parking. But really, 1A, 1A or 1B.
I don't, I don't like having above, I don't like having above-ground fuel line. To me, that's another disaster waiting to happen, or potential, you know what I mean? There's always potential to everything. I like 1A. Number one, because the FBO operator can actually see what's going on outside of his window, and he's the one charged with the responsibility of overseeing all of this. And, you know, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but that's the way I feel about it. I like the FBO operator being able to look at his window and see exactly what's going on with that fuel farm. If you had some kind of problem, they potentially could see what's going on. Option 2 is not going to give them that, and Option 3 is on the side of the apron down there. So to me, from a logistical and a safety standpoint, is getting these trucks off of the apron, I mean, a big old fuel truck loaded with fuel, there's potential for disaster there, so keeping that off of the apron, and I'm wondering if I could take some local option gas tax money and help with the road there by reducing the budgetary constraints without having to go back to Triumph, as Mr. Pierce stated earlier, is that a possibility?
Yeah, it's a possibility. I will say that, we're just talking briefly with staff, is that this is not technically a road project, but there are other funding options, instead of your local option gas tax, there are some other funding options. But I don't mind asking Triumph, I mean, we're talking about a ten percent increase in the budget, Triumph may not have a problem, but I, you know, I don't know, we've been waiting so long.
We have, and I don't want to stall this thing out for another year. Now, if we could get it to Triumph, and I'd be willing to get on the phone with them, do whatever I got to do to promote this thing, and we're promoting doing it right, without having a detailed budget when we applied to Triumph. Well, we didn't know. So, I mean, and I'm sure they want it done right, and they have money that's allocated for this county.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's just a matter of getting them to turn it loose, but do a project and do it You know, 1A is what I like, as a representative of this area and this district, and where the airport's located. I like 1A, and that's before you made your recommendation, John, just sitting here and listening to all the detailed presentation that you're presenting, to me, that's, that's the way to go. How we proceed now is up to the board and, and staff, and which way we need to go and try to make it work.
Yeah, I, I agree, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I agree that 1A was the best deal, but then we wanted to make sure there was enough money, you know, for the generator, and didn't have to go back to Triumph how long that would take. But yes, Commissioner, actually, later on, as Aaron does a report, there's a possibility we could look at that for some funding through the CARES funding, either this year or next year, whichever one is available. But yeah, 1B, my other problem with above, and I asked John this question, and he said, "Yeah, Michael." The other problem with above lines, maintenance, you're going to have a future maintenance cost forever, you know, and you don't want to get into that, you know, that's a bad thing, you know? So yes, I would say 1A, if we can get the rest of the money, if there's, money's a problem, then 1C. That's, you know, basically what we're looking at.
We have enough problems with water leaks out there, that's a big leak out there.
That's another discussion with the board.
Well, I concur with what Commissioner Pierce said, that 1C puts the fuel truck on the apron. Option 2 puts the fuel truck on the apron. Option 1B, and I think 1B, and Option 3 has an above-ground fuel line running, and it's close enough to the water, I know a little bit about this, it's close enough to the water, you're not just going to have maintenance, you're going to have maintenance.
Yes.
You're not just going to be able to put it up there and leave it alone, because you don't want to ever get to, I don't think we would, as a county or as an airport, get to the point where anybody's being called because we have fuel leaking at our airport.
Yes.
That's not going to be good. So I do think that Option 1A is the best option.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to make a distinction about two different types of fuel trucks. We're talking about a tanker that delivers the fuel from the highway into the airport with thousands of gallons, and that is, John, I just wanted to pause and just ask, I guess you have planned, if we look at Option 1A, that there's enough radius turn and ingress and egress for a fuel tanker to get in and out of there safely, is that right?
Yes, sir, you're absolutely right. We have modeling software where we actually have the largest fuel truck available today, and we were actually able to run it through this scenario, and that's actually what had go, that's how the edges of pavement were defined. It looks kind of funky, but that's really what the truck would need to make all the turns, keep all the, all the wheels on the pavement, so yes, sir, this would absolutely work for a fuel truck.
Then there's another type of fuel truck, which is a smaller delivery truck that actually can manipulate on the airport taxiway apron. That's commonly a way of delivering fuel to airplanes that are parked remotely from the FBO. Does this design, 1A, mandate that every airplane pulls up to the fuel delivery area and not have a fuel truck?
No, sir. This accommodates both. The difference is, of the nozzles that are provided with it, you're going to have self-serve nozzles for airplanes to fuel up themselves, you're also going to have separate connections for the fuel trucks to fill up. So, Centric, you have two options, you can either choose self-serve, where you pull up yourself, you use the credit card machine, you purchase your own fuel, you fill it up yourself, that's Option 1. Option 2 is, you can go to Centric and say, "Hey, I'm going to be here, can you fill up my airplane?" And Centric would use their own fuel trucks, they would also fill up their trucks on this side, they would fill the trucks on the airport, on the airside, and then go fill up, say, "This one is a jet right here." He would probably get, so, he'd probably have Centric fill it up, he wouldn't fill it up himself. So you still have both options available.
Okay. All right, that's, I think, important for pilots, and then the other thing is just an aesthetic issue. How about that generator making a lot of noise when it does fire up there and disturbing that area there? Is that a factor?
The generator, well, first, the generator would only fire up outside of a hurricane event or a power outage. Typically, they run for maybe thirty minutes once a month, just to keep it, keep the fuel going.
Okay.
I mean, it is an airport, and it's an industrial area, so I think the only people that would be bothering with it, the FBO operators themselves, maybe if you're parked over here and the generator starts up, it might startle you a little bit, but, I mean, the generators nowadays, we actually provide it inside of the hurricane enclosure, and it's also insulated, so the generator itself is actually pretty nice, it's not as loud as what you might think, like for your house or something like that.
I have a question, John, this is Ricky Jones, District 1. The modeling software you talked about, and I'm just trying to find a way, I do think 1A is the best, I don't know if it would have less impact on the current parking areas. Did you guys run a scenario where the entrance coming in is going all the way up and then taking a left and going out? Did you run that scenario?
Coming up this direction.
No, 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 not going there, going all the way in on the current road and taking a left to unload.
Yeah, we did, we did run that. So you would come up Airport Road, hang a left, fuel up here, and then come back out. I, we'd be happy to run, I could, I could show you exactly what the footprint would look like with that option. I think the concern is you still need to make this wide turn in order to straighten out before you get here.
Right.
But I'd be happy to run that scenario and provide that to the county for review, just to show you what the difference might be.
If it had a little bit less impact, is the only reason I'm asking, you know what I mean? It might not be enough to worry about, but it's just a thought.
Well, I tell you, I mean, honestly, that probably takes an hour to run that scenario and show the edge of pavement, so let me, we'll go run that scenario today, and I can send it over to Michael Verone, he can distribute that to the board, and we can show you the difference, and I could even show you the total square yardage difference, and any kind of, I could summarize the impact to the parking area with that scenario.
Right. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Let me just get an update, okay? I just talked to Corey Henderson from Triumph Stat, and this is the rules, if the, if the amendment, the budget amendment is less than five percent, it's a Triumph Stat administrative approval process. So, I'm using around numbers, if we only need, and basically it's a million dollars from Triumph, so if we're asking for fifty thousand dollars, they can do it administratively, we have to make a request. If it's more than that, then it has to go to the Triumph Board, we have to get a grant amendment, that's a little longer. And she said, "Look, Alan, even if you ask for, you're not going to get a hundred thousand dollars per month without increasing your match." She says, "I can't tell you now, sitting on the phone, what you need to come up with, but you're going to have a couple more cash anyway." So I, personally, the challenge to me is whether we just try and keep our requests from Triumph below five percent, and get the other money from the CARES Act, which is available to the county, or do we, or if we have, if we have competing uses for CARE Act, then we need to ask for more money out of Triumph, but I'm thinking, well, if we don't have a lot of competing uses from CARES Act, maybe we can just use that money and keep our requests at Triumph, that less than five percent of our grant, and then it's an administrative decision.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we use, if we got the fifty thousand dollars from administrative without having to go back to the Triumph Board.
Right.
Then that's going to leave us, by John's estimates, and he's not sure whether it'd be more or less, then you're looking at thirty thousand dollars. You said we were under budget by eighty thousand, John?
We were over budget about eighty thousand dollars with 1A.
Okay, we were over budget eighty thousand dollars, so if we get fifty thousand more from Triumph, that leaves us a thirty thousand dollar shortfall. Your best estimate, right? That's your best estimate, I mean, it could be as high as forty thousand dollar shortfall if we get the fifty thousand, or it could be as low as twenty. I mean, we don't really know the actual dollars till you get to going. To me, that's, that's our best option. I think it's a great improvement in the delivery system than what we have currently, we're able to keep these tankers, as Mr. Burke wanted to distinguish between tankers and a smaller truck, we're able to keep these tankers off of that airport apron weight. To me, this is the option we need to go with, and I think the board needs to go with that. Do we need to, how do we proceed here? How would staff recommend we proceed to, to make this a reality?
Number one, I would say we go ahead, we make the motion to go with 1A. We, in the motion, you ask Mr. Pierce to move ahead with requesting the five percent from Triumph, and then you ask staff to look at getting CARES Act, and Tracy is on there, we'll get with her in a second when Aaron gets to a report, and verify that we can use that money from, from the, from the CARES Act, I'm sorry, funding that's available to us. And so, that, to me, that would be the motion unless the attorney, oh, yes, sir, yeah, I'm aware, I told the chairman already, yeah. So that would be the motion that you would make after you take public comment here, you got a couple of people that did ask to speak from earlier, and we're going to get to them in a minute here. But yes, Commissioner Piers, I think that would be the path forward, unless somebody differs with me some way. Cool?
All right, so let's go and do the public comment.
Okay, so we have two people on public comment. Ted, I'm going to come to you first, and, so Ted, if you go ahead and you unmute, you're good to go. Hey, Ted, good morning, good morning. State your name for the record, state your name for the record, and go ahead.
Good morning, all.
Go ahead, Ted, we're here, you.
Hello, Ted, okay. Having been involved painfully in the movement of the fuel farm from position number three to the current position about fifteen years ago, and the refurbishment of all those tanks and pumps, I don't understand where we're coming from here, but I'll start with that number three. Number one, number three, first off, it's right beside the EOC. Do we want, I don't know what the proposed tankage is current, but currently we have some thirty-six thousand gallons of fuel down there, twelve thousand of avgas and twenty-four capacity of jet fuel. Now, in number three, besides it being beside the EOC in the middle of all this activity, and planes parked out there, it was, the fuel trucks would load and unload directly over the storm sewer grates, which is a, no, no, something had to be done there. Number, in the 1A position, why in the world do you want to put it right in the middle of all this activity? Spend all this extra money, when you, we just built this road, part of the reason for this new road was for the fuel trucks to deliver it down to the fuel farm. Of course, I realize the fuel trucks to deliver it down to the fuel farm. Uh, of course, I, I realize the project was cut short and money was turned back in because the road was not completed all the way. But, uh, you could use that money to extend that road on down to the fuel farm to keep them off the fuel, off the, uh, apron out there. That was definitely a no-no. We tried to get away from that. Um, I, I, I just can't, and not only that, it's right in the middle of all that electrical stuff there. The runway lights and, uh, the ramp lights, the whole ball of wax. There's already a generator there that has been serviced since 2018. It, uh, in the mail to do something with. And as far as noise, that generator, nobody even knows it's running unless you're outside next to it. It's a 60 KW prime generator. Uh, I'd be glad to answer any other questions, uh, that, since I was involved with it, and why we put it where it was. And we had the Airport Advisory Committee, and I think Alan Pierce was involved with it to some extent, and of course County Commission, and in the final say-so, and also the engineering at the time. So, uh, I, I don't know, what else can I answer input here, monkey wrenches I can throw into the equation?
That's it, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. That's it, Ted?
Yeah. Also, the, uh, you're having displaced aircraft out parking out there, which has always been a shortfall. The FBOs have always complained about that, not having enough parking space for the aircraft. Now you want to take at least six positions away from it. Uh, where are you going to put all of those other aircraft?
All right, Ted. Thank you very much. Next is Mr. Gordon Hunter. Uh, Mr. Gordon Hunter, I just selected you. You could unmute, address, give your name for the, I'm sorry, give your name for the record and address the board. You're still muted, Gordon. Hey, Gordon, you're still muted.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Now you're unmuted. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
State your name for the record and address the board, sir.
Thank you. Gordon 102316, Tallyhoe Drive. Uh, I'm glad Ted spoke up a little bit because he's had previous experience with this. Uh, this is the first time that the public has seen these options. And I, I think this is, uh, pretty sad. Uh, there's been, the committee that put this, the options together did not involve any citizen involvement at all, any airport operators. Uh, we have many people out there who operate their airplanes out of the T hangars and other hangars there, and they've had no opportunity to give an input for this procedure. Uh, it's sort of the same thing we had with the master plan update. There is no, nobody, uh, from the airport aviation community that was a part of this, uh, decision. I can, I can agree with Ted. I think that option 1A that, that you all seem to, um, favor a little bit is, uh, has got definitely disadvantages, uh, both with aircraft on the ramp and also the parking arrangement, the, the transportation for the truck, uh, fuel trucks. Now, option two is what we currently have right now, and just my first glance at it, I think that's, that's a, a pretty fair option. What, what the, what the diagrams that Avcon has shown us does not show us the new access road that goes off to the west and, uh, around to the T hangars. The trucks, fuel trucks could go on that new access road, come up onto the west apron, which has no, uh, which is a pretty vacant apron right now. There's not, there's not tie downs there that are used hardly at all. And, uh, I think that that would be a, a really good place to, to keep the fuel farm out there. I don't see any need for, uh, there's a talk about possible vandalism. I've never heard of vandalism taking place at all at the airport regarding the fuel systems. Um, I also think that, um, that, uh, the new access road should be, should be used for that purpose. The trucks can go down there. There's no need, in my estimation, as an airport user, that the FBO has to look out the window and see what's going on. They've operated for years, having the fuel remote, remote to the central area of the airport. And I would just say at first glance that I, uh, alternative two is, is a pretty good option. It also falls within the budget. Um, I think, uh, what I'm trying to say is I think this decision has been prematurely foisted upon the, the commissioners without some adequate research and the input from, uh, airport users. We have about, uh, six T hangars out there and a box hangar on the west side of the airport where people use the fuel. And I think they, they, they like the situation of where the location is currently. Um, also, uh, the fact if it was on 1A, it, it, people, uh, people wanted to use the fuel there. Um, self-service, there is a difference between self-service prices and Centric Aviation's prices of fuel. There's a significant difference. Self-service is probably the way most general aviation pilots would like to fuel their airplane. And, uh, so I think that's, that's a consideration too. I, there's very limited parking at, across from the FBO office, and that parking area probably needs to be expanded rather than cut short by having an access for a truck to come through there. Uh, there's very few parking spaces there. As the airport grows over the years, I think we're going to have need for a greater parking area for, uh, for people to come out to the airport to, uh, to use it for rental cars and so forth. Anyway, my, my, my main comment is, uh, this has been, this was, this is the first time that anybody's seen this. Uh, and I think that there needs to be a little more study made on it. This is a wonderful grant that the airport's been able to achieve. And I think for the money that's, that's going to be, uh, provided for airport, that we need to look at this thing with a full range of input from pilots and stakeholders at the airport, not just a, a small group of individuals that, uh, that, um, that have good input, and it's necessary for the FBO and the airport manager. But, um, for those who, who use the airport, I think there's got to be a better input and, and more pros and cons. I know for the master plan update, uh, the same, was the same way.
Okay. Mr. Gordon, you're, you're already above four minutes, sir. Could you?
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll wrap it up then. But I, my, my final comment is the fact that, uh, I think we need a little more study on this and get it from the guys who, who fly in the airplanes in and out of there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it, Commissioner?
That's all for public comments, correct?
That's it.
Commissioner Bolt, do you want to say something?
Thank you. You know, uh, could we consider perhaps a, a public hearing on this issue?
It's the pleasure of the board how we move forward. I will say this, though, um, and it's not just about this particular issue. Sometimes it's amazing to me how, how much we're asked to delay and wait. And then when things are taken too long, we're not getting anything done. So I always keep that in mind when I'm trying to delay a decision.
I understand.
Because it takes a long time to get things done anyway.
Yes, sir. And I, I do respect that. Um, this is a, I think, a critical issue for the airport. It, it's, it's about safety and all the, the issues that go along with fuel, ingress, egress, servicing, et cetera. I think there's multiple parameters here that we need to consider. And I would like to open it up for a workshop, and we'll move post, we'll move hastily to have the workshop done and, and get some input from folks in the community. I'd like to make a motion that we do that.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Bolt? To have a, a workshop for, I guess, for, you're saying for public input about the possibilities of where we're going to put the?
That's right.
New fuel farm?
The, the, the new fuel system and, uh, what its services will be, and its positives and negatives relative to each location. I'd like to have public input on that.
I'll second with a comment.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Ward. Your comment, man?
Is there a timeline? I, I know we need to be expeditious with this and, and get it done, because is there a limit on when the Triumph grant, grant needs to be used?
Oh, so, but it's, I mean, it's, we're not near the deadline on that. I'm, I'm not too worried about that.
Well, we're already pushing, pushing forward. You know, he says, whatever we, decision we make, the bids aren't going to go out for July or August. So that's already prolonged another two, three months. So I know to advertise for a public hearing, we have to have X amount of time as well. So that's just my thought.
Well, the other thing they're doing, as I understand it, John, please correct me if I'm wrong. You, you were bringing these preliminary, uh, design areas to the board, but none of them have been, uh, pursued or really detailed designed per se like they will be to actually do the project. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. We are asking, really, the, the purpose of this was to, you know, look at these options. Um, select which one was the preferred option, and then start the engineering on that option. So that's correct. There's, there's been those design surveys done yet. Uh, and the, the estimate that I provided for going out from bid, you know, July, July or August, that was assuming that a decision was made today so that we can start this process. But yeah, if, um, if there are, you know, if we, um, have a public meeting and, and where we, we would, at that time, we just need to be added on to, say, the three months or so that we would need to put together the design doc, the design documents for it.
Good.
John, let me just ask a question. So, so, I mean, what, the big difference between 1A and, uh, and keeping the, and rebuilding the fuel farm downwards at, uh, I mean, the, one, of course, if you rebuild where it's at, you do stay within the existing budget. But there is that new access road. So, so the difference is you're, you're, you're trying to avoid having the fuel farm, the fuel trucks on the ramp at all by using 1A. Is that, I mean, I'm just trying to hear what these, what these citizens just said and trying to figure out what's the real advantage to moving it to where, to 1A? I mean, I mean, it's cheaper down, down there at, uh, where it is, but is there something we're really gaining by going to 1A? I know we're gaining visibility from the FBO.
Yeah.
Is that the main thing?
1A, that was, um, you know, talking to the FBO, that was, um, the big plus, looked to have it, you know, really kind of right where everything's happening at the airport. You like the idea of being able to monitor it and keep track of it better than where it's located right now. But, um, I mean, that, that, that was really just the direction or the recommendations that were provided by the FBO.
Okay. So, let me clarify for the motion. Are we talking about a workshop or public hearing? That's two different things.
It is completely different.
Two different things. So which commissioners, which, what, what is the motion exactly?
The goal is to get public input and make sure we're taking good notes.
So that would be a workshop. That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing.
I would think so, with good outcome.
Okay. Just want to verify.
So that is the motion? Is that what you understood, Commissioner Ward?
Yeah.
Anyone else having discussion before we go?
Now, what y'all decide is going to be a workshop or a public?
Workshop.
Workshop.
So, if I, before you, you call. So, John, I, so I just heard talking about dates. So, and Commissioner Ward kind of has the same question. So let's say we schedule a workshop. Let's say we do it next month. How much down the road is that pushing the deadline, now the advertising, everything else? Because right now, we'd say, what, July, August, is what you're saying?
That's right. July, uh, we haven't put together a detailed schedule. We have, typically, we would need 90 days to work out the details with the, um, the fuel farm guy. Um, you know, often we should get through the standard design process to put this together. I mean, have survey upfront, so often we can't really start our design until we get the survey back on the site. Um, really, I, it's, we're estimating it would be 90 days from today to have bid documents ready to go on the street. So, yeah, if we have a public meeting next month, and then a decision's made, I guess I'm assuming maybe that decision was , that recommendation from the workshop, we need to come back before the board for approval, uh, before we proceed with, you know, survey and design for it. So I, I, I don't know, you guys might compare than me to estimate timeframe. I think maybe two months. We would, we would need two months to do the public meeting and get, you know, provide, I guess, that would need to be comments from the public meeting we need to summarize to the board and commissioners, and decisions ultimately made. So I guess we add about two months to the process.
And what is the, what is a deadline? What is our concern about a deadline? I guess we want to do this efficiently and in a timely manner. Is there some money to be lost if we miss certain deadline here?
I don't have a copy of the grant in front of me, um, but I do know that, that the Triumph Grant states the date that all construction must be complete and all money must be spent by the county. Um, I, I don't, I, I, off the top of my head, I don't remember what that date is though. But there is a fixed completion date for the project that, where if you don't end, the, the grant does state, don't spend your money by that day, then that gets forfeited, you know, whatever, that gets forfeited.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was wanting to suggest that the board get the grant itself. I think that's where we started, and then Mr. Pierce just went. Uh, so if the board wanted to wait or continue on with other parts of the meeting and come back to this issue, um, because I don't know how long it's going to take them to find the grant, but we definitely need, well, apparently that long.
That's the efficiency we have.
I, I have the grant here. I can, I'm looking through our server right now. I can find it and pull it up.
I'm looking at it.
Mr. Pierce has found it, John.
Okay, great.
Yeah, both of you guys could look.
Yeah, I'm looking through it right now also.
Just to let you know, John, we, we can see whatever you're looking at. So, you know.
Oh, okay. Got it. Thank you.
I think 2023 is the deadline, but, because that's the deadline on some of this, some of this fall back. So I'm sitting here. By December 31st, 2023, all the following projects should have been, all the following should have been expanded. But I think, I'm thinking, John, December 31st, 2023 is the dateless deadline.
Okay. And construction itself, construction, we just did a fuel farm at a different airport, and it took about 14 months just because of the long lead time on the tanks and the fuel equipment. Pretty much, they, they got all the site work done and foundations done, they're ready to go. But the equipment took a long time. It's just long lead time. So typically, you know, 12 to 14 months is what you need for the construction piece of it. Plus you have your, your bid advertisement, evaluation, and contracts and all that stuff. So, um, you said December 23?
Yeah.
What completion date?
23.
So with that timeline in mind, it's tighter than we think it is.
Yeah, because.
Because if you move this current timeline two months, and then you have 90 days to complete it after it starts, and you had 14 months, you're past December of 2023.
And God forbid you got another storm.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if we decide to go with a certain option that's over budget and we have to utilize CARES Act funds, is there a deadline on those funds that need to be utilized as well?
No. Not the current money we have. Not the current money we have.
Yeah, not the current money. But if we have to rely on any other money for anything else, Commissioner Ward is, is, she's right with that warning, basically. Yes. So.
Yeah, it might only seem like two months, but everything has to be.
Yes. And again, we know how, after Michael, what the, it did to the construction industry, how it slowed down supplies and everything else. Again, just keep that in mind, commissioners.
I still would like to keep my motion viable, and we'll.
Oh, it's still on the floor?
Surely. And I just want to reemphasize that. And hey, we could have this workshop at night. I mean, very quickly, very quickly.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Is this a one-time workshop?
I, I believe it's specific to this. Yes, sir.
I meant, it seems like we don't ever do nothing right, but if something else going to come up involving, is this going to take care of all the issues? Or, or another group going to come up or?
No, no. I think we'll focus just on this subject. I hear what you're saying. I agree.
Well, I think I hear where Commissioner Lockey's coming from, that when we were going through the master plan, since it was brought up by one of the, the public commentators, that, comments, where we had a ma, master plan, there was an opportunity for public comment. They had a chance to public, to, to, to put their comments, and yet after we passed that date, they wanted, they wanted to delay and have more public comments. I think that's where he's, he's heading.
Yes.
Commissioner, is basically, is this a one-time thing? Or?
I don't know.
If we make a decision after the public, after the workshop, do we could then have to face a call for more public comments?
Now, we'll limit the workshop, and that would be the spirit of my motion too, to limit the workshop specifically to this fuel farm decision, location, and engineering only.
How long the fuel farm been going on?
That's a question, that's before Michael, he wants to know.
Well, I mean, the existing fuel farm is almost 20 years old.
I know, but I'm.
People working on this grant, uh, a long time. Well, let me start, we started this grant right after Hurricane Michael.
Correct.
That was two years ago.
But wouldn't you say you had ample ti, we had, people had ample time to check all this out?
Well, we had ample time when we started the grant after Hurricane. Well, we had ample time when we started the grant after Hurricane Michael. Yeah, I didn't realize the deadline was December 30th. It is, the completion date is December 31st, 2023. Now, could we get an extension? I don't know. I don't, you know, I want to, I want to spend some money to build something.
All right. So, everybody ready to vote on the motion to hold the public workshop?
Do we want to set a time certain? Because I heard you talk about having a meeting in the evening.
Just be sure, the spirit of that was just to expedite the process of the workshop.
Well, if you want to do that, I think you need to have it before our next board meeting then. If you really want to expedite it.
I would be willing to do that, just, certainly.
I guess we'll find out if the rest of the board is willing to do that.
Okay, sure.
Are we gonna, are we gonna name a specific date and time there?
I would prefer we do, since we're making this motion. If, I mean, let's pick, pick, I mean, next Tuesday at 5:00, at 6:00, you know, what?
The reason I said that, Commissioner Ward, is because of workshop, we can't vote.
We can't, we can't.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, next Tuesday.
Just taking input.
Next Tuesday is planning and zoning here at 6:30, so we can't do it on Tuesday.
Right.
So.
So what, Dan?
You have a specific, a Monday, I mean, what's?
I'm, I'm fine with any day of the week, and very flexible in that area.
And what kind of meeting it gonna be, a virtual? I mean, you don't do it online?
Yes, because the board has decided not until May do we start let in person. So it would be an online, public workshop.
Where did them pass it? I'm not trying to have it my way. I'm just saying, if we want it to be expedited, then we need to expedite.
Let's look at the calendar here.
Where the policy making body of this coming?
I mean, next Wednesday, the 14th, at 6:00. I know it's kind of hard. I'm asking everybody to look at their schedule like right away.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
So the April 6th, I'm sorry.
April 4th.
It'll be April 14th at 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
What about people who don't have computers? What happened there?
Kind of like what's going on now.
Do we advertise it?
There's, I doubt I can get it in the paper.
You will not get it in the week.
Yeah, I can, even when I meet the deadline.
So you can't have it next Wednesday then?
So it'll be, I mean, it'll be only on the website. It's the best I can do right now.
Unless they've changed their deadline, Mr. Chairman, the local paper is Wednesday, excuse me, Friday at noon of last week.
Right.
In order to get something into the paper for Thursday. I've had some success in getting it in like on a Monday, but we can certainly attempt to get something in the paper, but odds are they've already formatted and don't have room, but we won't know until we ask.
As long as it's noticed online, are we still okay with the public notice part of it, though?
I think so, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. I didn't know, that's why I was asking.
Yes, okay. But you can do what we talked about earlier, something on W O Y S, something on our website, posting at the courthouse annex in the courthouse here.
And I have to ask John, because we do want John.
Oh, yeah.
There. John, you available by Zoom for April 14th at 6:00 PM?
Yes, April 14th at 6:00 PM Eastern. Yes, I'm available.
Okay.
Um, can I also, I just want to make sure I understand the process for this. So would a decision be made at the April 14th workshop, or would that recommendation have to come back before the board for formal approval after that?
Correct. I'm sorry, you want to?
So the reason we would be doing it before our next meeting is because at a workshop, the board cannot make a vote. But that would give us the opportunity to put it back on our next agenda two weeks from today so we could vote on the final plan.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. So everybody discussed this as much as they want to. I think we have. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That passes 4-1, Jessica. Commissioner Lockley opposed.
Thank you very much.
All right. So is anything else for Mr. John?
No, sir.
Actually, I have something while he's here that I want to ask a question. I don't know that involves you, Mr. John, but I want to ask a question. You tell me if it does, Michael.
Okay.
Because I don't know. I still don't, I'm still trying to understand stuff with airport as far as who's responsible for what. But I would like to set up a meeting. I don't know if John would be involved. I know this board took a decision a couple of months ago to keep our third runway open.
Mm-hmm.
Before we adopt this master plan, we've also taken decision to allow money to be spent to get new equipment, and I want to see what's being done. I want you to set up a meeting for me as the chairman of this board with Mr. John, the FBO, Jason Puckett, whoever else is involved.
Okay.
To know what we're doing to address some of our issues we have with foliage down the sides of the runways, or wherever they might be, that they shouldn't be.
Okay.
So, I don't know necessarily involves John, but while he's here, you know, I might as well.
I'd be happy to help out. You're right. It doesn't really involve us directly, but I'd be happy to assist any way I can.
Okay. Well, again, it's just a, I just want to understand better, so that's why I'm asking.
John, I do have a question, because I, I think I talked to Jason, not you, about this, and I promise I'll let you go right after this. So, the runway that was the big controversy, you know, we were closing, then took it out the master plan, blah, 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 we're never really closing. What is the status of that runway today, currently? Is it a, what we refer to as utility?
You know, I have to go look that up. The previous master plan update, you know, done back 10 years ago or more, it was, it was just your regular, not, other than utility runway. About four years ago, is my understanding, the F D O T did an inspection, and that's when they identified the trees on the east side of 1836. They were all inside of the primary surface for 1836. And the F D O T inspector, who is still, still the inspector today, he made the recommendation to the airport at that time that you could reclassify it as a utility runway, which doesn't, it doesn't really impact the use of the runway, but it reduces the, the area that you had to remain to keep clear. Because at that time, it was understood that they can't even have to clear 100 foot wide by the entire length of the runway in order to, to clear the primary surface. And so that was, that was the decision that was made at the time. And I believe a couple other factors that went into that, that decision was, number one, there's no published approaches for 1836, and also there's no lighting on 1836. It's only a visual runway during the daytime.
Okay, so, just, I just hate to cut you off. So you're saying to me, because I want to make this clear, because there's been numerous questions about this, the classifications of a utility runway doesn't really make that much difference as its use for this, its operational use, because there's no lights, and you said no approach, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just, I need to get that clear. So, the difference between it, the classifications, is how much we have to clear around the runway. Because I think Jason said there's, and I have to ask them to look up the minutes, that we did do this a while back. This utility status of that runway has actually been in effect for a number of years here. But people keep saying it's going to go to that. And another question, does that, they keep blaming, I keep seeing emails where it's blamed for that status for not getting funding. But I thought the notice from F D O T not to fund that, that runway anymore came before the status was, was changed to utility runway. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, the funding, I would say since 2011, 2010, 2011 is when the F D O T made the determination that they would no longer fund any improvements associated with 1836. They did fund the marking of it a few years ago, but that was kind of a special situation. Yeah, the F D O T funding stopped for 1836 around 2010 or 11.
Okay, that's, that was my question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, I just want to make a statement to say that whenever you classify runways, potentially, if you're classifying a runway to downgrade it, you are impairing the future of that runway in many, many ways. And it hobbles the airport to have these lesser designations of runways. Yes, some don't have lights, some need vegetation cleared, et cetera. But the spirit of a good airport is all runways function very, very well. And lighting and clearing and safety is almighty in this airport. Particularly begin to think about the fact that you're going to build a multimillion dollar E O C on that property someday, and all of the future planning that we need to do for a functional airport needs to be considered. I would not declassify any runway in that airport ever.
Yeah. And again, just so I'm clear, sir, my point is, the airport, that airport, that status is already there. So we would have to upgrade the status, not.
So be it.
Downgrade it. That's what we need to approach. That's what I want to get clear. If that's the way we're going to go, sir.
Sure.
That's what we need to do.
I think we need to do that, and look at division of Franklin County and how we're growing.
Yes.
Anyone else having questions, Mr. John, while he's here? Thank you, Mr. John. We appreciate your time today.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'll speak to you guys on the April 14th workshop.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
No problem. I know we have a couple people still waiting on the line, but I think we need to take another five minutes.
Okay, cool.
Then we'll wrap up the rest of it. Then we'll wrap up the rest of it.
If I get coronavirus, how long will it be before I can be around other people?
Go on Google and see how many answers there are to that. It goes anywhere from four to five days to two weeks. Now, where did I get those numbers? In general, the experts now feel like you can have the infection for four to five days before you begin showing symptoms, but that could be up to two weeks. And I've been on the internet and I've seen people say you have to go 72 hours without a fever before you can be around anyone. That's kind of common sense, but others are saying it should be at least seven days since the onset of symptoms before you should be around anyone. That makes sense to me, too. And others are saying, as our state policy is now, you need to be quarantined for 14 days. I think the safe thing, it makes good sense to say you should be at least 72 hours without a fever before you're around anyone because that indicates that you have stopped shedding virus particles. When a virus gets in you, it's using your own system to recreate copies of itself. And you're going to go through waves of fever typically while that's happening. Once you start getting into the fevers and the cough and then you come out of it, by the time you finished a good solid three days, you probably stopped shedding virus particles that you could pass on to other people. After that, I'd say make sure it's a full seven days before the onset of symptoms. By then, you've had a week out. You're in good shape, I think, to be around other people. Is that a guarantee? No, but none of this is going to be a guarantee. I think that's the best we know right now.
Come inside and check us out. We have something for everyone. Hello. Welcome to Appalachia Cola Chocolate and Coffee Company. From our handmade chocolates, fudges, delicious old fashioned caramel, pies, cookies, including the largest Greek wedding and macarons you've ever seen. We also make the Italian style ice cream called Gelato, which is adult tested and kid approved. We have a full menu coffee bar, from lattes and cappuccinos to some of our signature drinks, such as our offigatos and black bottom coffees. And don't forget about the famous crafty coffee blend. We also roast our coffee beans on site, so it's super fresh. Don't like coffee? We also have teas and lemonade. If you're hungry, we serve breakfast sandwiches on our homemade bread, or we have New York water bagels. Or try the biscuits and gravy that are to die for. We also have lunch sandwiches and soups. We do carry some gluten free and vegan options as well. Here what some locals have to say.
I love the biscuits and gravy.
You know something? The coffee here is great.
I love the ice cream of the chocolate company.
So come check us out and stay awhile. In here, it's just like Cheers, where everybody knows your name. Oh, hey, Dan.
Our beautiful piece of paradise. Please make sure you visit our local shops, restaurants, galleries, and take some time to experience something different and take a fishing trip or tour with one of our experienced guides. Our neighbors and their businesses are the heartbeat of our community. Thank you for visiting and remember to shop local, eat local, and fish local. This message is brought to you by the Appalachia Cola Bay Chamber of Commerce.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Next up is Mr. Chris Langston with a request. Is he on the line with us?
Yes, Chris is there. Chris, you could go ahead. Oh, he's unmuted. All right, Chris, good morning. Still.
Good morning, Commissioners, staff. How are y'all doing today? I hope everything's well.
All good.
I'm here to talk to you today about a request that Liberty County is wanting to make to Franklin County. And that is to, of course, obtain state owned lands. I believe all of you have the letter in front of you. And with that letter, it's already, it's being accompanied by three other support letters. And there is one county, Calhoun County, has already voted to support Liberty County's efforts. They just, Liberty County has yet to receive that letter. And I would ask today that Franklin County support Liberty County's efforts to do such. One thing I also would like to point out, at the last meeting, there was a lot of concern surrounding the management plan. I can say that a land swap is being instituted in this. With that being said, the state's land management of Tate-Sell State Forest, that would govern the land we swap with, not the land we swap for. So that, that has been addressed and alleviated.
So, Chris, let me, let me be clear. So you're saying that when you swap properties, the property that you, you swap, that Liberty County gets will be excluded from the management plan?
It will be, yes.
Oh, okay. Did they, I'm sorry, just, just me being staff member. So did they offer that in writing anywhere? That's something that, that you could send me at some point?
Well, I don't know that I, you know, the thing about it is, is the land that we swap with will be contiguous to Tate-Sell.
Uh huh.
And that's a private tract. So if we do a land swap, the land management will go to the land that we swap with. And then the land we swap for will kind of come under the umbrella and ownership of Liberty County.
Okay.
Now, I will, of course, be in, you know, I'll be the one spearheading, tip of the spear in the land swap. Capital investment, so on and so forth.
Is this, if you get this, will they be able to use this to help refurbish, refurbish our bay?
Yes, sir. Yes, Commissioner. The, the primary purpose of this operation has not changed. The primary purpose will be to augment the efforts and the restoration efforts of the ABSE. You know, we want to be in a position where we can supply the right type of material for these restoration efforts. Liberty County, you know, my former quarry site is located in Liberty County. And addressing some of the concerns that have been raised in the past, we decided to, I addressed it with Liberty County. We talked about the land directly across the street from the old mine. And with that being said, we'll be hopefully mining the same deposit that had so much success in Chesapeake, Western Gulf states, and quite frankly, it had a lot of, it had a great spat set in Appalachia Cola Bay when it was initially set. So the, the ultimate goal hasn't changed, no, sir.
I guess, Chris, we'll be talking to that, what was that doctor? It escapes me now. That was that last meeting?
Sandra Brooke.
Okay, Dr. Brooke, okay.
All you need is a letter, right?
Yeah.
So, I want, I want to clarify, so our letter of support is supporting Liberty County?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. There's a reason I'm asking because we just recently done a letter of support for Gulf County and it came from Gulf County straight to us. That's the only reason I'm asking.
Yeah. Yes, Commissioner. So, and Chris, I'll, because they asked and I'll say, you know, so this came through Chris Langston. That's who you see here. I have not received anything outside of him from Liberty County staff or any other commissioner in any way. So I just need to put that on the record to make sure the board is aware of that.
Well, I can go ahead and tell you why that happened. Liberty County, when they voted unanimously to assume the efforts to obtain the land, they were planning on just simply mailing them out and letting them come back as, you know, as each county addressed the issue. I, on the other hand, made the request to be able to take each individual letter to each individual county. That way, in the event that any questions or concerns did come up, somebody was there with knowledge to address and answer those set concerns in a, you know, in appropriate manner.
Okay, so that's something I probably, so Chris, that's good. After the meeting, I'll ask because I'll probably like to get a copy of those minutes, the Liberty County Commission meeting minutes, just to have it as a backup, that's all.
Absolutely. That's not a problem.
Mr. Chairman.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Lockley.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Do you have a discussion, Commissioner Bolt?
Please. Should we be conscious of the state forest management and some of their goals as all this transpires and to see that it is compatible and blends in with their vision for this forest area?
I think we have, Commissioner, yes. No, we should definitely be concerned about that. And that was the last time, what Mr. Langston was referring to earlier is the last time he was here. That's what the board did. We delayed any action for the other requests that Mr. Langston had at that point in time because they were in the process of redoing the Tate-Sell Management Plan, 10 year plan. They've since done that, but as I understand it here today, this request he's making for the letter of support for Liberty County is different in that the request he's making to the state is to essentially swap land. So the land that he presently has, that is his in Liberty County, or either Liberty County is, I'm unsure about that, that would fall under the management plan and the property swapping, too, would come out from under the management plan. That's what I understood.
That's what I understood.
Is the state okay with all that?
Well, they either will be or they won't be. At the end of the day, if they don't back this letter of support, he's not getting it anyway. You know what I'm saying? The state ultimately has the final say.
Okay. So, so let me say this.
Is that correct? I mean, that's what, the way I understand it.
Yes. So I would like
That is, that is correct. That is correct.
Okay. So what I would like in a motion, just because of what Commissioner Bolt said, and I know how we dealt with it in the past, actually, I'm going to ask the board to allow Attorney Schuler to modify or just write the letter in, in any way, because a couple of things, and this is a recommendation, I'm not saying a couple of things should be included. Commissioner Bolt concerns on what Chris just stated, that we are of the understanding that when the property switches, the new property will fall under the management plan and the old property, switched property, will no longer be under the management plan. So I think that, that wording needs to be in there. Again, some reference to, to the minutes, which I will look for to make sure that's in there, to show that Mr. Langston is in fact an agent of Liberty County that's asking for this request. You know, as he said, they authorized him to do that in the minutes. And also, and this not necessarily speaks to Chris per se, but this letter, that in the future, if it shows up somewhere else, this is, no way this board is, is condoning or supporting any request for any of our BP funding, like consortium or triumph or anything else, you know, for any, this type of project in any way. I would like Attorney Schuler
No, no, no. Yeah. The quarry will be shell sustaining. We're not looking for any grants for any kind of capital investment.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you might not, Chris, but I just don't want this letter to be used from some other company trying to say, well, hey, you did it for him, so, you see what I'm saying?
Oh, right, okay, okay.
So that's, you know, my job is to protect the county in any way I can. I'm asking the board to authorize Attorney Schuler to even protect us further, is all I'm saying. That's, that's a recommendation, Commissioners, for you in the wording in your motion.
Another one, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I want us to be aware of the in-depth presentation that Dr. Brooks, the scientist from the marine biology lab, gave us last week, a couple of weeks ago. And the science that's going into the redevelopment of our bay. I think that we ought to be very sensitive about what their goals are and is fossilized shell a product that is compatible with their long range plan for the bay? Something we need to be thinking about as we look forward in this area.
So let me see if I can wrap up what this motion is.
Okay.
We're making a motion to write a letter to support Liberty County in potential land swap in Liberty County from one tract that will go under the Tate-Sell Management Plan to a tract that's going to come out from under that plan that Liberty County will own. And that this board has clearly stated in that letter that we, although we support Liberty County, we are conscious of the fact that nobody with these kinds of efforts will be coming to the county for any triumph funding, restore funding, or any, any other source of funding from the county to accomplish that goal. Is that all that's been said here?
And that we are sensitive to this, Chairman.
Okay.
And we're sensitive to the state management of forestry as we make these decisions and to the science of the bay.
Right, right. Okay.
But didn't they, didn't, didn't they say that Samo County has done it?
So far, there's been three others we know of and one more that
You said Calhoun.
Mr. Langston said has done it, but they haven't received the letter yet.
And I'm also currently working with Taylor County, Leon County. Gulf County is going to be bringing it up at the end of this month, and I've yet to go to reach out to Bay County.
All right. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? I oppose.
I oppose.
It's a 3-2 vote. It passes.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I do appreciate your time.
Yes, sir. You have a good day.
Okay.
You, too.
All right. Up next is ARPC, Josh Adams with an update. Josh, you on the line, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead.
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I just have a very brief presentation to deliver to y'all. This, it's still morning, this morning. It is on the subject of the Appalachia Resilience Collaborative. Just trying to share my screen now here. All right. Are you all able to see that?
Yeah, as soon as I get this out the way.
Yeah.
Okay. This is going to be very brief, so I presented this to Jefferson County as well as Waculla County, and they have signed on to the memorandum of understanding, which I believe that Mr. Marone was able to give to y'all. So I'm just going to go over an overview of exactly what that MOU was and does, the structure and the benefits to signing to that memorandum of understanding. So the ARPC, the Appalachia Regional Planning Council, established an MOU in late November, more or less establishing a framework where counties and municipalities in the region may sign in and have proof of supporting this collaborative that we're trying to stand up. The big takeaway is, is it's non-binding, so any of the initiatives, goals or actions underneath that, that collaborative are non-binding. We're not trying to restrict development. We're simply trying to reduce duplicity of efforts by having all the counties in our region involved. And it's going to be member driven so that any of the ideas and initiatives are coming out of our region and not from somewhere else because, you know, our region's very unique and anything that we want, we want to, you know, keep, keep local as best we can since our, and I've got a slide on the, the structure, the proposed structure of the collaborative. And so keeping it specific to our region with the oversight of our electorate. And one of the main things to come out of this collaborative will be an action plan. Basically, we'll have a series of meetings with various county and city staff to try to flesh out some different goals and policies that might be beneficial to the region. And setting up this collaborative will help us take advantage of funding that's coming down the pipeline from the federal and state level. So the structure would be an executive or a steering committee comprised of ARPC executive committee, committee members. So I've got a little, little graphic on the next slide that'll kind of highlight that structure. Working group comprised of the higher level county staff, such as city managers and administrators, coordinators, and members of the planning and engineering departments, and then private partners from the, the private sector to kind of highlight different topics, techniques, different initiatives that are going on so that we can stay attuned to kind of the best available science and industry standards there. So I mentioned a steering committee, a work group, as well as private sector partners. So this is kind of the proposed structure I have. And the idea that anything that comes out of discussions with a working group or private sector partners would be run up to the steering committee so that you have actually elected officials, kind of as the, the final check on ideas that are being proposed. So resiliency is be a new buzzword. Prior to that, it was green infrastructure. Prior to that, it was, I don't know, but, but green infrastructure was big. Now the buzzword is resiliency. And all resiliency is the ability of something returned to its original size and shape after being pressed or deformed, or an ability to recover from or just easily to misfortune or change. So we're, we're embracing resiliency kind of already in the framework of ARPC departments, including environmental housing, transportation, emergency planning, and economic development. And keeping it distinct from the ARPC in general. And why we're doing that is because there's going to be specific funding coming from, like I said, the, the state legislature, President, Senate President Simpson, as well as House Speaker Sprouse, as well as Governor DeSantis have all been very supportive of the idea of collaboratives or compacts. And it looks like funding is going to be dispersed at the end of this legislative session. And so we're really trying to get out ahead and stand up this, this collaborative, this entity, to go ahead and be able to take advantage of those funds that are coming down the pipeline. And identify common resiliency needs in the region so that grants can be, can be pursued. So I mentioned it was going to be short and sweet, so, so that's it. Please let me know if you have any questions or comments. I just realized I didn't have my, my video on here. So, see my face.
You're good, Josh. Thank you for making this presentation, Dave. I don't have any questions, but I do have a couple of comments that I want to share with the rest of the commission because I do enjoy being our representative on the ARPC board. I'm also currently the vice chair of the executive committee. As such, I'm part of the steering committee they're talking about. So resiliency that they're talking about, sea level rise and other issues that are coming up, really hit home for us as a region post Hurricane Michael. Everybody's scrambling, trying to do all these things for recovery efforts and resiliency efforts, but there wasn't, you know, it was like everybody was doing their own thing. So it was very confusing for a lot of people. Thus, it was also very confusing for communities to reach out and get dollars from the state to help because then how do you help one and you don't have money to help the other? It put them in a different situation as well. So doing this collaborative, I think, is going to add the benefit for our nine county region that we can ask and it's going to be, it's going to cover us all, so we're not all by ourselves. And that's what I think the Regional Planning Council should be about. I just want to make the board aware of those issues. I just wanna make the board aware of, of those issues. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Adams?
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. I think the state and the legislature this year is coming up with a bunch of money for, to combat sea level rise.
They're talking about it, yes.
You know, and I wonder about the infrastructure, not for the county, but for the city of Appalachia Cola, such as this water issue we had back here a while back with the, the lift station being overwhelmed outside the courthouse here and other things where the sea level rise is, is contributing to that. And if some of those types of projects would be entertained, when you're looking at resiliency and being able to combat this sea level rise, the money I'm speaking of is coming from the state of Florida, but there's also federal money coming down. Is that what we're all talking about here this morning?
Yes, sir. As far as I understand it, Josh, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct, and, uh, specifically, infrastructure is on, um, uh, both, uh, Speaker Sprouse and President Simpson, as well as Governor DeSantis' kind of top priorities, and, and looking at how, um, sea level rise, as well as, um, uh, flooding issues are gonna be affecting those larger infrastructure projects into the future.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Josh, um, I'm remembering about a year ago when you came to our commission and you presented the, uh, that shoreline restoration project that you're, you're conducting an experiment there between East Point and Carabelle. How's that coming along relative to this project?
Uh, that, that's coming, um, actually with those, uh, FDEP and Army Corps of Engineers permits have been submitted, uh, and working on a presentation for that that I was gonna deliver to y'all in a, a few weeks or a few months down the line.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Just, it seemed like it was related to what you're talking about this morning.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any questions for Josh? Josh, so Michael, what are, are we needing-
So basically, what he would like you to do is, is, yeah, so, support it and authorize your signature on, on a, on a signature block that will go with every, every county that he's, or community that he's dealing with, you know, would have copies of this signature block with each of their chairman's signatures. So just a motion to basically support it and authorize your signature, yes.
Okay. All right, pleasure to the board.
I'll make a motion to adopt their collaborative, APRC.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's a five-o vote, Jess. Josh, it passed five-o.
All right. Thank you all so much, Commissioners, and y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Josh, I'll get you that this afternoon, that signature, okay?
All right. Thank you so much, Michael.
Okay. No problems.
Okay. Up next, Ms. Erin Griffin.
Okay. Um, let's see, item number two, cause we've already done the Buddy Ward Re project, um, we're going to be establishing an evaluation committee-
For countywide sand dune restoration and SGI stormwater improvements. Alan and I have been working with Melissa Boudreaux, Langton Consulting, to finalize the RFQs for the two restored projects, the countywide sand dune restoration and the St. George Island stormwater improvements. The RFQ solicitations have been advertised in the Panama City News Herald, the Appalachia Cola Times, posted on the county website, and posted on the governmental bid platform, DemandStar. The board will open the RFQs at the May 4th meeting. When the RFQs are open, the board will need to create an evaluation committee to evaluate the responses and make a recommendation to the board. The evaluation committee needs to be at least three people and could be myself, Alan Pearson, Mark Currenton. Upon selection of the firm, county staff will then negotiate with the firm to create a budget to accomplish a scope of work in the RFQ. All costs associated with this work will be paid by Restore Funds. The goal of both projects is to develop construction plans and specifications that would be used in advertising for the construction of the projects. While this first phase of the projects is being completed, Langton will be working with Treasury to approve construction funds. It has been our experience that will take at least six months for Treasury to run through its MYIP amendment process. Does the board want to go ahead and create the evaluation committee with the members mentioned above?
I'll make a motion to establish the evaluation committee with names mentioned above.
Can I have a motion by Commissioner Parrish?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes five-o to adopt that review committee.
Our next item is the East Point Fishing Pier Restoration was structurally sound after the storm, however, the damages to the walkways, ramps, riprap, and parking area was significant. C-30 West between Apalachicola and Indian Pass also had two large washouts caused by extreme wind and surge during Hurricane Michael. Both large projects are in the final phase of design and permitting, and the next step will be to advertise for bids for the repairs. It is recommended that the board authorize staff to proceed with the advertising for construction bids for the East Point Fishing Pier repairs and C-30A washouts project, which will both be FMI-funded.
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. Any discussion? So we're gonna do them both at the same time, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, amendment is five-o.
Okay. Um, also in your packet, there is, um, there's also gonna be a CARES Act expenditure summary in Excel format, um, and then Franklin County has received $2,115,719 in the first CARES funding allocation, and this was based upon the documented cost of public safety personnel during the pandemic. To date, the county incurred over $1.6 million in direct expenditures related to COVID-19 response efforts. Nearly half of these funds were provided as aid to other governmental agencies, which include transfers to the city of Appalachia Cola and Carabelle, grants to local businesses, and assistance to local food pantries. The other half of these funds were used for operational expenditures relative to coronavirus response, including disinfectants, barriers, large-scale software and computer upgrades to provide cloud-based access with limited interaction, and capital outlay funds for kiosks, message boards, and digital scanners. Of the balance available, there is one outstanding COVID remediation request for an estimated $62,558 in antibacterial and antimicrobial surfacing of over 10,000 square feet of the jail. Another item for consideration is to pay outright for the $192,855 computer-animated dispatch system for the Sheriff's Department in lieu of the prior approval to pursue financing for this software. Should the board proceed with the two proposed items above, this will leave approximately $228,793 in CARES funds available. The CARES Cost Tracking Workbook is attached. Does the board authorize going out to bid for the antibacterial and antimicrobial surfacing of the jail and the utilization of the CARES funds for the E-Force Computer Animated Dispatch System in lieu of financing?
Please, the board?
And if you have any questions about using the funding, Tracy's on the line to answer those questions.
But the $228 would be what's left if we did both of these?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And both of them, but a deal, right?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
Yeah. One for the jail, one for the Sheriff's Department.
But now, the dispatch stuff, Commissioner Lockley, would cover, they dispatch all emergency services for the county.
Yeah.
From fire to ambulance to, they do all dispatching. So, yeah, it is in the jail, but the dispatch does all emergency services.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a move that we pass this.
Okay. A motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioner Burton makes a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Ward, and we're approving that spending these funds as laid out here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, any more discussion before we vote?
So we, I'm sorry.
Did we got any more people acting for stuff, or that the, that the final, or you don't know?
Yeah, there, I mean, there are a couple of other asks out there just going on, like we just talked about this morning, using some of this money for the airport, depending on which, uh, which project we go with, which we'll know by the next meeting, so, yeah. And Tracy doesn't have any more information at the moment, but we should be getting at least, Tracy, is it half? Um, if you're gonna go ahead, unmute Tracy, if you can, is it, uh, everything works out with the new funding, will we, will we be seeing half of this 2-point-whatever-million here within the next 60 days, 60, 90 days?
Yes, sir. As of right now, um, actually, it probably should be closer to that, like the first part of May, since the bill was actually signed back in the beginning of March, um, you will get 50% of the funds upfront, and then those funds, you won't get your other 50% less than one year, so you just gotta kinda think through of what you want for expenditures, but you'll get 50%, and then one year and a day later, you'll get the other 50%, and then all of those funds must be expended by, uh, December of 2024.
Okay. Here's a loaded question. Are there any strings attached, uh, with the upcoming funding, like the fiasco we went through with the first set of funding where the rules changed every other week?
Yes, sir. So this is what we know right now. One, we have seen nothing from Treasury as of yet. There is a call today, I think it's more on the infrastructure bill, not on this one, but we're gonna call in just to listen, to see what they have to say about it, but right now, Treasury has not released any guidance. Um, and you're absolutely right, like, the last pot of funds, you know, it was told it was gonna be this, and then we had changes and changes, and luckily, in the end, it kind of all worked out for the benefit, but it was a lot of back and forth, which made everybody nervous, cause you don't know what's spending the money if you're doing it, you know, you're gonna get reimbursed. Ideally, if we could do the salaries again, to me, that's the cleanest, and the best way for you to recoup revenue. Um, the other thing is, is there is a revenue loss line item, so unless that changes, so, you know, you do have a little bit of flexibility, because once that money comes back to you, it just goes into your general coffers, so you do have that flexibility, but, um, as far as anything being attached, we don't know as of yet. We do know there's gonna be reporting, it's gonna be a little bit different, because it's not gonna be through the state, so, you know, we'll have to see what kind of systems they're gonna use and that type of thing. Um, in the end, the, the CARES Act funds with the state, when they got the consultants in, the North Highland, um, it actually worked out a lot better, and their system was actually very functional and good, so hopefully, they'll have something like that, that, the same type of reporting system as they had at that level.
Now, this, the what you were talking about for the Sheriff's Department and, uh, dispatches and everything, that's in the old money.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Yes. There's that, there's never any other.
Okay.
Tracy, the, the call you're referring to is a NACO call at 1 o'clock, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been getting on those, they, they've been actually really good, they've, they've been good calls, um, providing some pretty good information.
Well, good, good. Got all the questions we had about it? Yeah, I was afraid of that stipulation's part of that, but anyway. Okay, so we still need to vote? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's five-o, Jessica.
Uh, thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, now we just have a few informational items, um, and I know this one is going to be, you know, fairly loaded, so Alan's here to answer any questions that you may have. Um, the update on the East Point and Two Mile dredging projects. Alan has been in contact with various, um, U.S. Corps of Engineer personnel for updates on the dredging projects. The status is complicated, because there are multiple people working on different parts of the projects. Some corps staff is working with Washington to push the needed memorandum of agreement through the Congressional Budget Office, other corps staff is working with FDEP to finalize the East Point spoil design. The latest variation to the spoil design is the creation of a vegetated fringe along the disposal field to stabilize the perimeter. Because the county owns the spoil disposal area, the corps says that it's the county's responsibility to maintain it, which entails creating and planting, planting the vegetated fringe. Alan has been in contact with Ms. Jenna Harper with ANR, and she has sensitively agreed to use her staff and volunteers to plant the vegetation. At this time, Mark and Alan have talked about asking the county Soil Conservation Board, of which they both serve, for the funds to buy the plants that ANR would use. The budget that Alan and Ms. Harper have discussed is around $5,000. The goal would be for the county to provide ANR with a base quantity of plants, which they would grow out so that ANR could produce more plants that they would use on projects they want to accomplish in the future. FWC must approve the vegetation plan, so Alan has been working with FWC staff to develop a suitable plan. After much communication between all parties, in summary, the corps will not initiate dredging in the county until after the peak of the 2021 hurricane season, which is mid-September. The corps does not want to create the East Point disposal area at the start of hurricane season for fear the unconsolidated material will be too fluid if a hurricane or even a tropical storm were to come near East Point. The corps does not want to repeat what happened in 1985, when the East Point Channel was dredged, and then the 1985 hurricane season came along and moved a lot of the recently dredged material right back into the channel. If this were to happen, the corps and the county would be out of luck and out $5 million. The corps is also working on the Two Mile dredging permit with FDEP. The county has received the final version of the memorandum of agreement from the corps. It is attached to this report. Alan sent it to Mr. Schuler for his comments, and in general, the comments Mr. Schuler and Alan provided the corps are, number one, there's no commencement date on the MOA. The county does not want to provide the funds months in advance when the dredging will actually occur. Alan has talked to the corps, and they think they can work the timeline, so the county would provide the funds within 30 days of, advance of dredging. The MOA says the county will be obligated to pay the full $5 million of local funds within 30 days of signing the MOA, even though they are acknowledging dredging will not occur until at least September, as discussed above. In discussions with corps staff, they have told Alan that they would, they would not expect full payment, as they acknowledge there are two dredging projects. The corps staff is mulling over wording changes. The corps staff seems willing to accept payment for each project as it occurs. Mr. Schuler is also concerned that the MOA, as written, provides the corps with the authority to approve a dredging budget more than the $5 million. Mr. Schuler is asking for the corps to provide the county with the right to reduce the scope to stay within the budget. Item three, section seven of the agreement says the corps gets to keep any county funds in excess of what is used on the project. The corps staff says that is not what is intended, as the corps does return unused fund to the contributor, so the corps is going to review that language. Section nine of the agreement does not include the sovereign immunity language established by the state of Florida. Mr. Schuler has asked that this language be included in the agreement.
Can you stop there?
Mm-hmm.
So, so basically, that, those are the comments Mr. Schuler and I gave the corps, and then the corps has responded. I've sent Mr. Schuler a copy of the responses. Uh, because of this call situation, I'm not gonna go through all of that. Mr. Schuler may want to add some comments, but essentially, the, the corps has basically agreed to all the issues, except section nine, which is sovereign immunity issue, and, um, I will read the response, because it's two sentences, this is from the corps, I'll get them to Mr. Schuler already. Uh, so we asked that they had this, this comment in there, that subjects to the limited sovereign immunity stated in section seven, six, eight, Florida statutes, nothing here, it should be considered to be a waiver of sovereign immunity, except as set forth in Florida statutes. Mr. Schuler's adamant this needs to be in there. The corps' response is, this sentence requested cannot be added. This, this dredging is for a portion of a federal navigation project, and federal law is followed, even when the non-federal sponsored funding funds of the work. There is a requirement for the non-federal sponsor to hold the United States harmless, and the state law cannot limit that requirement. That's, and so I defer Mr. Schuler to say either surrender or whatever you're gonna do.
Are you gonna read my response publicly?
Uh, well, no, I'm not.
I haven't yet heard the commitment from the corps to make the written changes that they put in the email.
We don't have that either.
Yeah, I'm not sure they even intend on doing it. They're, they're telling us how they interpret the contract. I, I don't read any messaging that they're willing to actually change the written language in the contract, uh, but since you won't read it publicly, I remember what I wrote. Essentially, they're, they're saying, sit down, shut up, and enjoy the ride, because if you want dredging done, it's gonna be done on our terms, uh, I mean, maybe they'll work with us, I mean, but I, in terms of the sequencing of the funding, I mean, this is the same group that I told Alan that took our $5 million in dredging money in 2005, and we haven't seen it since. Uh, so I'm very concerned about them wanting to require the board to pay them $5 million upfront with no commencement date. I mean, we may be another 16 years out, who knows? I mean, that's not what they're saying, but that's also not what the contract says. So do you have any sense from them that they're willing to make changes in writing, or are they just simply saying, take it as written?
No, I think they're gonna make some changes.
Okay, well, then let's wait and see when they send the written changes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Except for, except for section nine, there's not gonna be-
That's fine.
And I appreciate everything you're saying, but I'm, I'm like, probably both of you are, everybody in this room is, regardless of how the funding's gonna do or what we have to do to provide it, whether it be borrowing some money from fact to, so we can pay them and then get the money back from Treasury, I, I think we make all those timelines work, I still would like to see a commencement date.
Mm-hmm.
I still would like to see, you know, even if it's mid-September, is it September 15th or 17th? I mean, you know what I mean?
Or is it September of this year?
Right. So that, that's what I would like to see.
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry. I'd like to make a note for the record, too. I've been asked by several people, um, that they've heard that it's the counties hold up with this and not the, the corps of engineers, and I just wanna make a statement for the record, that's not the case, apparently. And I just want to make a statement for the record, that's not the case, apparently. We own a timeline, the state supersedes, they're going to do what they want to do and it's going to be like Attorney Schuler said on their timeline. So we are trying to get this done. It's just we're getting hit with all these barricades and roadblocks that is of no due, undue necessary delay on the county's parts. I just want to make that for the record because I've had people ask me about it, multiple people. I just want to make a record note that fact.
I've had a push forward from what I see now. You know, I question whether it's worth using the Corps of Engineers in the future. I mean, it's just been a nightmare. We will have, the two mud disposal areas are going to be permitted and it's, we already own it. As far as I'm concerned, next time we do a dredging project, if we have to restore consortium money, we just go find a dredging contractor on a more regular basis than what we're doing now, so that the costs are smaller and the amount of volume that's being dredged is smaller. And we try and maintain it ourselves. This is a nightmare trying to use federal dollars on a, on what is a local sponsored channel. The Corps doesn't want to deal with us. I mean, they want to deal with big things and this is just an inconvenience and an irritation on their part to have to deal with us. So I...
And I do agree with the Chairman's statement about a time. I know, I understand the whole hurricane thing, but it seems like it's excuse after excuse.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I agree with the Chairman and, you know, I'd like to get a date nailed down. Because I've had people call me telling me they're getting their boats stuck out here at Two Mile Channel. I've had people tell me in East Point, they were getting stuck out there. You know, these people are trying to make a living on the water, minus the oyster industry that's gone now. So, you know, they need to have a way, these charter boats and fishermen and then all the other seafood workers need to have a way in and out where they don't have to worry about getting their boat stuck.
This whole issue of hurricane season just came up in a conver, I was on a teleconference and the Corps was talking, I was on a teleconference with FWC talking about this vegetative plant and it just sort of slid into the conversation. Oh, yeah, well, you know, we'll have to worry about vegetation in 2022. I'm like, 2022? What year is this now? And then I began to back up and I was like, wait a minute now. Oh, yeah, well, Mr. Piercey, you know, because that mud is going to be so fluid, we're not going to do it at the beginning of hurricane season because, you know, we don't want the risk. And I understand that. But why didn't they tell us that eight months ago? I mean, it just burned me up.
Well, if you, I want to echo Commissioner Ward. The county, the commission, we've never been to hold up on nothing, you know, for the dredge. We have never been. And you got to be aware, when you're messing with that Corps engineer, they could do it like they done it the last time in which that was, they had approvals and everything. But they took the money and sent it out there. Katrina, Katrina, if you want.
Excuse me, thank you.
That's what they did with the money, what we voted to give. We put what they had approvals and they just did it. With no recourse to come back and say, well, we'll do you later or we'll get some more money. We see it, what, 16 years later? And they still haven't done that. They bear watch.
The lesson I've learned from all this thing, that if we ever can do another dredging project, we don't do it without the Corps. We try to do it without the Corps of Engineers. It's just been a nightmare trying to get their assistance.
You can also see, Mr. Chairman, I think the Corps of Engineers is holding Apalachicola Bay potentially hostage relative to this dam system that they have up in Georgia. That, I think that's where the Supreme Court last week defaulted to that consideration as well. And I understand exactly the administrative headwind and burden that you've had with the Corps of Engineers. And we may be a little guy, but that's federal people's money. And I would, I would definitely continue to pursue them and pester them to get that part of the money to happen here.
And thank you. Thank you all for y'all's hard work. I know it's frustrating for you guys when you're trying to get all this stuff done and it's just roadblock after roadblock after roadblock.
And I make commitments and statements to you all thinking this is where I think we're headed and then all of a sudden I realize, no, we're not headed there at all. And I hate to be that ignorant after 32 years' work with the county, like, oh, wow, I didn't realize that was going to be the case, you know, hurricane season, we're not going to do it now. Anyway, so that's the Corps comment. Now, now she's going to read a statement about the consortium, then I got comments on that, too.
Alan has confirmed with consortium staff that the consortium only works on a reimbursement basis. The consortium staff thinks that the county's project should be awarded in the next few weeks, but since the consortium will only reimburse the county for work done, it appears it will be necessary to arrange some short-term financing for the project. In the best scenario, the Corps will allow the county to provide its funds shortly before dredging commences. The county would borrow the money through FAC, front it to the Corps, and then when the East Point Channel is dredged, the Corps confirms it is completed, the county would then get fully reimbursed by the consortium. The dredging project is only supposed to take six weeks once started, so it is not a long-term financing project. The same scenario would then repeat for the Two Mile Channel.
Okay, so this morning, I get from the consortium staff, Don Duarte, Commissioner Parish, a request to answer the following questions that came from the Restore Council. Now, the Restore Council is this 11-member federal group that's ultimately going to approve our $5 million project. They've had our request since August. That was eight months ago. They now ask that the Corps provide a written statement by the Corps of Engineers that provides a statutory authority which allows the Corps to receive funds from other sources, being us. Like, guys, you've had eight months and now you're going to ask the Corps to write me some narrative that hopefully can be done on a local level, but if it has to come out of a Washington Corps office, I just, it really burned me up. And Mr. Schuler was lucky he wasn't in the room when I sent my response because it was not very proper. But anyway, so I need a written response with the Corps on that. Then I need a written justification that the Corps needs all the money. Well, that's sort of in our benefit. So the consortium, the Restore Council is asking the Corps, why do you need our money? So that helps us in that case. Then I need a written statement from the county that will make up any additional funds. Well, I'll write that statement. It doesn't mean it's going to be very valid, but I can write that statement. But then the Corps, then the Council comes back on our side. They want, they want to request the date between the MOA and when this project is going to be finalized. They want to know when it's going to start, when it's going to final. Then they are also asking, what's the estimated useful life of the project? Well, I'd like to know that, too. And then lastly, though, they get into something which could be weeds. Who owns the land where the East Point Channel is being dredged? Well, it's submerged land. We don't really have a lease yet on that property. We never have talked about needing a lease from the state of Florida. I don't want to get into submerged land lease, but we may end up there. I mean, the state of Florida has issued the permit to put it there, but do we in fact, and I, look, Mr. Schuler, we don't have a lease from the state of Florida on that property. We've never talked about it. In all these years of delving, it's like it's never been an issue.
We probably don't have a lease for either one of them, do we?
Well, we don't need a lease for the other one because we own it. The other property's can't. The Two Mile Channel, the disposal area and the Two Mile Channels are up on disposal area.
Yeah, disposal, yes.
Yeah, and we own that. The disposal area for the East Point Channel is behind the breakwater.
I guess my question is, why do they care where the spoil goes? How is that potentially?
I, I, thank you. Anyway.
Sounds like any excuse to delay it is what they're trying to come up with, in my opinion.
Eight months now, we're talking.
On the disposal area, you'd have to refer back to the DEP permit that the county has the right to use this land.
And I hope that'll be enough.
So I guess DEP will be the owner?
Well, they're going to.
They will be the owner, but they issued a permit for one-time use?
They issued a permit.
That's what you would refer to?
I guess, but I mean, I don't want the Council to say, well, that's not good enough. You have a disposal area that's going to be out there in perpetuity. You need a lease from the state of Florida. I don't want to get into a submerged land lease. Do you?
I don't understand the relevance.
I don't, I don't either. And I don't mean to, it's something of a South of the Bay, but it just, this just came in this morning and then since the consortium came on the sort, I thought I'd just mention it now, that this is another series of questions that should have been asked eight months ago.
That's just somebody trying to make a strike.
It'd be the same people that own the bay, own the, own the land where the Corps of Engineers just dredge from the Apalachicola Channel to the Two Dollar Bridge over there and it's just, same people own the same property.
Well, the state of Florida, yeah.
They just deposited a bunch of sand that they dredged out of these navigable waterways right into the bay. Best thing's happening here.
Right.
I'm with that bridge, yes, sir.
Okay, we'll continue to work on these answers.
You had been around the bay a long time to call it Two Dollar Bridge. Most newer people don't know that terminology.
When it was a home bridge, it cost you $2 to go across.
Okay, go ahead, Alan.
Okay, the next informational item is in regards to the Alligator Drive Hurricane Repairs Construction Agreement. At the last meeting, the Chairman was authorized to sign the notice of award to Anderson, Columbia for $5,073,311.39. The county received the attached contract documents back yesterday. And once the Chairman signs, a pre-construction meeting will be held with the contractor and a notice to proceed will be issued. Once the notice to proceed is issued, the contractor will have 150 days to complete the project. So we are getting close on that one.
Is that it, then?
That's it.
Go, go, go. All right, sir. Mr. Merle?
All right, Commissioners. Item one, page eight. The Sheriff's Office requested the Chairman's signature on E911 Rural Grant Application and the GeoCom GeoLinks Software and Support Services. Mrs. Griffith reviewed both documents and determined that both are on our annual agreements. I just need Board action to ratify the Chairman's signature on those applications and the software support services. They were due the end of last month.
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, Jessica. Go ahead, Michael.
Item two, at your January 5th meeting, the Board authorized Commissioner Ward to seek quotes and funding to perform repairs at Ryan Drive. Quotes for repairs are attached and the cost of the repairs will be paid from District Five's Paving Fund and the City of Carabel, who agreed to cost share in this project. The extensive repairs in the case of emergency declaration should be part of the Board's action in authorizing this project today. In addition, if Commissioner Ward thinks it's necessary, authorizing Attorney Schuler to negotiate the cost share into local agreement with the City of Carabel should also be considered today. So the Board action to authorize repairs to Ryan Drive project declared an emergency project, waiving your bidding procedures. And in addition, authorize Attorney Schuler to negotiate a cost share into local agreement with the City of Carabel.
I'll make a motion with comment.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Ward.
Second with comment.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Commissioner Ward, go ahead with your comment.
Just so you guys know, I did give you a copy of each. I ain't using my road paving funds for this. The City of Carabel has been graciously, has decided to share cost this with me, so it's only going to cost half. We decided to go with the option where it's a full, complete, proper fix instead of continually patching it, because they're having to patch it. I've had calls from constituents saying they can actually feel the vibration of cars going over because it's in that much, it's in that much bad a shape. So, you know, we, the City of Carabel has agreed, in addition to me, to do the full cost of the $90,000 repair for the full repair. And this includes the sidewalk repair, the guardrail repair, the striping and the signage, et cetera. And I agree, and I appreciate the City of Carabel working with me on this so that I don't have to spend $90,000 of my road paving funds. So I will like to, in addition, Attorney Schuler, and I'll make my motion on this. They, the City of Carabel, they were asking for a set of plans on this. We decided to keep the county engineer and the city engineer out of this because of cost. It's cheaper. It was $147,000 for the city engineer and the county engineer to do this versus $90,000 to have Roberts and Roberts do it. It is an emergent-type issue because, again, I feel like it's going to cave in at any time. I know it's been patched, patched, and patched. But the City of Carabel, the engineer, the city engineer has agreed to draw a set of plans at no cost to the city. And the City of Carabel is also going to pay for the survey. So if you can include that in the inter-local agreement, that way everybody's on the same page, I would appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're amending your motion to reflect those changes. Commissioner Bolt, do you amend your second?
I amend it.
Okay. Was that it, Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt, your comment is welcome.
I really want to applaud this inter-local communication and cooperation between the City of Carabel and Franklin County. This, I think, is an up-to-date, modern way to go as we see future funding that comes through grants and applications. There's just another inter-local cooperation between the City of Carabel and Franklin County. And that was a letter of affirmation that the City of Carabel sent to Franklin County years ago when we applied for grant funding for the resurfacing of Highway 67. That because of that letter of agreement through an affirmation from the City of Carabel, that highway began its resurfacing right there at Tallahassee Street in '98. So these are two excellent examples of inter-local agreement cooperation. And I think it's admirable and a future way to look for future funding.
Thank you.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimous, Jessica. Good, sir.
Item three, while the St. George Island Landscaping Project is under construction, Commissioner Jones would like to use $1,650 from his local option gas, tax, road paving funds to add electrical receptacles along the right-of-way of Franklin Boulevard down the Welcome Sign. Board action to approve this expense, $1,650, to add the electrical receptacles along that section of the right-of-way to be paid up District One's Paving Funds.
We have a motion by Commissioner Parish, second by Commissioner Lachlan. Any discussion? Commissioners, I will say this by way of discussion, adding these receptacles, we started a couple of years ago during Christmas time every year. They're lighting the palms on the island as a way to bring in the season. Since we added palm trees, we're adding the ability to also put lights on those trees. So it's just staying consistent. That's what we're doing with the money. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? That's unanimous, five oh.
Item four is Mr. Steve Patterson. Your inspector is working on obtaining a provisional building official certificate necessary to extend the agreement with Mr. Gary Milner for building official services for the unincorporated county area on a month-to-month basis. Mr. Patterson is waiting for an appointment to appear before the State Board, which should meet later this month, and then he should have his certificate in May. So Board action to extend agreement with Mr. Gary Milner for building official services on a month-to-month basis.
So move.
A motion by Commissioner Bolt to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
Yes, Mike. Just for the record, extending it on the same terms as it exists.
I'm sorry, yes, the same terms, just month-to-month now, instead of three months at a time.
So same terms as four, but it's a month about the basis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the only thing changing is the basis of it.
Yes.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That's unanimous, five oh.
Sir, item five, the Board is aware there are proposed reductions in the Department of Corrections' upcoming state budget that may result in a closing of at least four prisons statewide. There are four in the Senate and two in the House, so that could be opposite. As far as I know, there are no specific prisons that have been identified. But there is language in the Senate Proposed Appropriation Bill that outlines a process leading to consolidation and closure. With the assistance of Mr. Fonda Davis, the Warden is tentatively scheduled to appear at your April 20th meeting to discuss inmate later and more than likely propose prison closings. There is another matter, I'm sorry. There's a proposed $20 million transfer from FDOT's Small County Outreach Program that we know as SCOP, and Small County Road Assistance Program, which we know as SCRAP, to a new rural arterial program that is not as specific about who is eligible to receive funds, which will reduce the amount of available funding for the county. Commissioner Jones, Chairman Jones yesterday said to me, he saw where it'll go to counties with four lanes, not two-lane highways. That's less money for us.
Michael, that was actually something, when I was talking to Senator Ozley, one of the last times I talked to her, she brought that to my attention.
Okay.
That it was, it was more, since the RTRO program would be focused more on making two-lane roads, four-lane roads.
Yes.
And since we don't have many four-lane roads in the county, I would assume that puts us out of the bid for that money.
Disadvantage. I will tell you that Senator Ozley, I talked to her about this last week and we talked about this yesterday. So we've been in contact. She's aware. And she's working her best. Anything we can do to help her, help us, greatly appreciated.
Mike, real quick, Mr. Chairman, when it comes to prison closures, I'm really concerned about that. Some of the criteria within the Senate bill says, depends on your local labor force. As we all know, the prison in Carabel has not been fully staffed since it was built.
Yes.
So that really concerns me. When you read through what the Senate proposal is and the criteria they use to try to find prisons to close.
Yeah.
But without inmates helping bust, cut this grass and all on sides of the road.
Yeah, so we have.
That would be detrimental for us. When I talked to one of our legislature leader, when I'm worried about all nine of my counties, I'm advocating for our county. And then they come back to me, you know, I've got nine counties and a lot of them are all rural. come back to me, you know, I've got nine counties, and a lot of them are all rural, so I'm advocating. So, I mean, I don't know where we stand with that. But I do know that we've been understaffed since that prison was built in Carabel. So, it really brings, and that's part of the criteria they have to consider.
Yes.
Local labor pool, you know, and all, really concerns us.
And that's a relatively modern new building, too, comparatively.
Yes. Okay, so both of you have hit nails on the head. So, we have an advantage and a disadvantage.
Yes.
So, one of the criterias is about maintenance costs. So, our maintenance cost, correct, Commissioner Bolt, our maintenance cost is low on that criteria scale, because our building is newer compared to some of the older jails throughout the state down south. However, the bad, our bad point, and all this is conversations with Senator Ozley, is what Commissioner Parrish is saying. The problem is not so much the inmates, is that the staff, we are so understaffed at the prison, that that goes as a disadvantage for us. So, she's like, it's a catch-22, Commissioners, as to where we are. We gotta come, go with a new building, but we have something bad with being so understaffed.
Mr. Chairman, I got something at. I did, I did speak with one of our representatives, and I did emphasize that a lot, even though they're understaffed, I personally feel that, and I do know, that a lot of our people that were displaced by the oyster industry have gotten their credentials and are now corrections officers at that prison. So, if, I know he's got nine covered, dime prisons, but this one, you know, it's a big employment agency in our county, considering that we don't have a bay for people to work on anymore in terms of the oyster industry. And that's what I emphasized to him, and he did take that into consideration. I don't know, in the grand scheme of things, if it's gonna help, but I did make that point.
And, you know, let's think of something, too, Mr. Chairman, and your insight in the long-range plan for affordable worker housing, and with some of the infrastructure, we've begun to plan for that. So, I think we've got a great base to keep that prison open.
Hopefully so.
Yeah.
The, the issue is, if they pass it as it presently is, they still don't have to have the plan drawn together as far as who's gonna potentially close, and who's gonna stay open until sometime in September. So, they're looking at passing this less than a month from now, but then that gives them four or five months to try to make sure, I guess, our name's not on the list.
Yeah.
Is what it, what it gives us, so, you know.
Back before budget time.
Yes.
Yeah.
We no longer have any inmates. We no longer have anybody to cut the grass and do all this, we need all these ditches across the county.
Yeah. It's gonna be tough.
You either hire a bunch of billy goats and move them every day, or you're gonna need some more fad, one or two.
You know, you have to hire billy goats, Commissioner. You just have to put them out there, they'll go through it.
But, you know, look, look at how we've accommodated the state in so many ways. Their bay is shut down, they bought 17,500 acres of our property, and now that, that's gone away. You know, this prison is critical. And the only thing we have left is tourism, and as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, several months ago, one hurricane could wipe that out.
Good. It is a valid economic driver for our county.
Yes.
So, I really hope that that takes precedence over any discussion of maintenance cost or lack of funding, or staffing, or whatever. Because, I mean, in a perfect world, when it was the Bay City Work Camp, I think they had plenty of staff. And then they wanted to make it bigger. They wanted to be able to do more. And it kind of got bigger than what we've been able to accommodate so far. So, it'll be interesting to see how it comes out. But I think we're all doing the right thing by continuing to stay in form, continuing to have our discussions with our elected representatives, that's what they're there for. And maybe we'll have a positive outcome.
And the other thing, I think there's a list that they have to turn in in December of to which prisons they're gonna tear down.
Yes.
Is that still there, too? So hopefully, again, Commissioner, without us being a newer facility, you would think it's illogical to tear down a new building, right?
Illogical. Wrong.
That's the Senate proposal, that whatever they close, has to be torn down.
Right, by the end of the year.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-three, every, or twenty twenty-four, one of those years.
Yeah.
So, they're not only gonna close, they're gonna tear it down. So, it won't ever reopen.
Yeah. It's not scary. And the final item on these cuts, there's also proposed cuts
to healthcare hospitals, especially Medicaid. Mr. David Walker, your Weems CEO, is joining with other state agencies in there to keep in touch with Senator Ozley and Representative Schoeffe about possible budget cuts. I think it's important that this board continues, like the Chairman just said, to discuss all these proposed cuts with Senator Ozley and Representative Schoeffe. And we already had that discussion, so. Final action item, registration is open for FAC's Annual Conference and Educational Exposition in Orange County. It's from June 29th to July 2nd. If you're planning on attending, please inform Ms. Courtney Bankston as soon as possible, so that she can secure your accommodations. I do need Board action to authorize travel expenses for Commissioner's staff and Attorney Schuler for the FAC Conference and Educational Exposition.
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lockland, a second by Commissioner Parrish.
Second with comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I'll get with Courtney, but I'm, I took off, I put in to take off from work to attend this, so I'd like to attend this conference.
Yeah. This, this is a big one.
Yeah.
Any more discussion before we vote?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, five oh.
I'll touch on, just one or two of my informational items is the, the Weems Board of Directors, because Commissioner Bolt was there, and he might want to comment, that the Weems audit was presented by Car Riggs and Ingram, Brian Hall of Car Riggs and Ingram. He was there for the presentation, so I think he might want to address that. And everything else is just updates, including the Causeway update. That's item number three, where I was able to get with Carter Johnson, and he, they're gonna try something interim, and then put it as a work, a product, you know, a big project with that. Commissioner Ward, I've also talked to Carter Johnson about the crosswalk over in Carabel, so he's working on that for us, too.
Okay.
Commissioner Bolt, I didn't hear any comments about the Weems audit, and that's, that's it for me.
Just in summary, COVID virus has been very good to the hospital relative to federal funding. It continues to just amaze me how, how much the federal government funding is really dumping and showering this hospital with money, and with privilege, and with credentials, and with excellent advisory staff on a federal and state level. Just summary, in the year 2019, that hospital had roughly $271 in cash, $271,000. At the end of 2020, it had $4,395 in cash. Of course, it was pointed out by the CPA, don't, you know, that it's federal money. No, I'm not sure we can spend it all and everything, but it's such a peace of mind. I also want to point out to the staff that I've noticed that the hospital administration has not come to this Board for extra money, other than the supplements that we give them every month. I think, I've, I've noticed and observed that they are working very, very hard to refine their numbers, crunch their numbers, and be accountable on collections of money. I've also been very impressed with the management that has been, been coming to us from the Alliant Rural Healthcare staff. They've had a different staff member present at every Board meeting so far, and they all bring different expertise. Very refreshing, very refreshing environment there.
That's it for you, sir.
Mr. Coleman, by the way, I'm glad you said it. Mr. Jim Coleman from Alliant will be here at your first meeting in May, six, to give you an update, basically, a presentation as to where they're at. He will also comment on the audit and how he thinks that they can do better.
He's gonna come in person, because we're gonna be open at that point.
Yeah, he's coming in person. He's gonna be making a trip to make this presentation to the Board.
Sounds good.
That's it for me.
Okay. Attorney Schuler?
Mike, can you pull up the graphic from the property appraisal?
I sure will try, sir.
We've got all about that. That's not a problem. Commissioners, as you have noticed possibly, the parking ordinance has not been held today. I was not able to pull everything together in time for that ordinance hearing today. I sent the ad to the paper last Friday for a public hearing on that parking ordinance for Alligator Point and St. George Island through your April 20th meeting. During your meeting, I sent a follow-up email to the paper saying, can you confirm you've received and plan on publishing? I'm getting a little bit concerned, because even though I've turned in the ad on time, usually, they turn right around, they'll send me a, a email confirming receipt and that a proof of publication will be forthcoming. I still haven't even gotten the acknowledgement that they've received my ad, so I did follow up with them during the meeting. Does the Board have any comments or directions for me while I finalize, because I'm going to finalize the ordinance and have it filed with the Clerk's Office on Thursday, hopefully coinciding with the date of the publication of the ad. But anything further the Board wants to give me guidance on?
I have a comment or two I want to make concerning public parking, specifically on St. George Island, which is what I deal with, you know, as a Commissioner of that district. So, I, I do think it's a valid concern that, that David Covington brought this morning. I've had the same discussion with a myriad of residents. You know, if the county is going to, because we've discussed allowing the sheriff to boot vehicles if they're improperly parked, well, so we have, the way it's currently structured on the island, anyway, we, we have a designated public parking area, then the rest of it, there are designated beach accesses, but it doesn't, we've never stated, six can park at this access, four at this access, 15 at this, you know what I mean? We've never done that. So, I think we're, we're moving, without moving forward and relegating what public parking we have provided, we're, we're setting the Sheriff's Department up for failure, because they're gonna be potentially booting and are doing things with cars that the county has not made that designation on. I don't know, I'm not trying to slow this down, but I do think we need to address all the matters about public parking before we start booting cars. You know what I mean? And another issue that he raised this morning, and the same thought I've had with other constituents, is, so we're gonna relegate where the public can park, but we're still gonna tell vendors they can use any county right-of-way. I perceive that to be an issue. Now, that might just be me, I'm only one of five, but I perceive that to be an issue, to say, any county right-of-way can be used for vending. So, those are some of my comments about the public parking. Now, how we address them, I don't propose to have all the answers, but I do think we need to address them comprehensively, is all I'm saying.
And, Mr. Chairman, I want to, I want to echo the same thing. We, we have the limited parking on those beach inlet areas in Alligator Point, too, and we really don't know how many actual designated parking areas there are.
Right.
I think we should be looking at that.
Well, it's, it's just difficult, Commissioner, to hold people accountable. If you have seven cars there, you know, and you're gonna boot one of them, you know what I'm saying?
I do.
It's just, it's setting it up to be so arbitrary and capricious.
Sure.
And it's gonna be, we're creating a bigger problem for ourselves, potentially. But all I'm trying to do is avoid any unintended consequences, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman, I will echo. I also have some concerns about jumping right into a booting program or mobilization program without looking at what other alternatives are available. But, again, that's a policy decision for the Board to make, but there, there may be some baby steps in between moving towards a mobilization. But, the hearing on the 20th, as directed by the Board, will be with the consideration of the mobilization devices, as well as providing for parking and providing for no parking areas. When I went and looked at the plaques of various beach access points on St. George Island, these would be the roads that run north and south on St. George Island, also the roads at Alligator Point, at the public beaches that run north and south, not the main drag, not Alligator Drive, at Alligator Point, not the main drag on the island, essentially it's Glory Drive, not necessarily looking at parking on those main drags, because they're so long and there's no, no, no stopping, no stop signs, anything of that nature. But, the right-of-ways available on St. George Island are 60 feet wide, and the right-of-ways on Alligator Point are 50.
If that.
Just if y'all wanna be thinking about options between now and the 20th.
But, but the particular thing that I noticed when, when Mr. Solomon and I were looking at them the other week, there are a lot of accesses on the island that the boardwalk is built really close to the road.
Yeah.
That we have signage on one side, we have a trash receptacle on the other, both good and valid things. And a lot of those street ends have a power pole there that's not attached to anything, and a thing there for the telephone company. So, ideally, I think the best thing we'd do would be able to create perpendicular spaces to the road with a designated, a designated parking stop, so then that's a parking spot. And if you get 10, you get 10. If you get 5, you get 5. But you designate where they're not parked all down the road, because if they park down the road this way, they're gonna start parking down the road that way. And I know it's all county right-of-way, but again, if we're gonna start trying to start booting them, I think we need to give them a place they know is dedicated, so they can know, just like you do when you go to a mall, and you try to pull into a parking garage, well, you keep riding, because they're all full.
Right.
You don't just park anywhere you see to park your car.
Yes.
You will get ticketed.
And as Commissioner, Commissioner Bolt has pointed out, we got one industry left in this county.
Yeah. Yes.
Any, any other guidance for me from the Board on parking issues?
Michael, can, can you style the ordinance with site plans of these various parking areas relative to the beach accesses?
I can present at the public hearing copies of the plaques, so the Board can look at it. I don't think I've gotten sufficient clear, clear direction from the Board to me, as a Board, to create parking. But I will certainly make sure the information is available.
Okay.
Mike, can you scroll that up a little bit for the map?
About there's good.
Yeah. Alright, Commissioners, there you go. At, at the bottom center of the map provided by your property or your tax collector, there are two partial lots, although it's kind of hard to make it out on that particular diagram, because you have green on something dark and X's. But, the tax collector has asked this Board to exercise its statutory authority to authorize a direct sale to adjacent property owners of two partial lots. These lots were located over in the northeast quadrant of the City of Carabel, in the San Antonio area, where he's come to you in the past, and you're, you're applying for tax deeds. Under the statute, because of the impartial nature of these lots, and the fact that they are valued by your property appraiser at less than $15,000, you do have the statutory authority, if you choose to exercise it, to effect a direct sale to adjacent property owners. And the way that process would work, if the Board authorizes this, I would send letters to the adjacent property owners, saying the county is interested in selling these lots. I would give them the valuation placed by the property appraiser, which is $7,500 per partial lot that's owned by the county. If we should receive within 10 days the interest from more than one adjacent property owner, then they would be directed to send a sealed bid to the county, and then the direct sale would be affected to whoever the highest bidder was. So, that, that lays out the statutory scheme, and it does follow the tax collector's request to this Board that, that you authorize this direct sale.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, has this individual come to the tax collector's office asking how he can buy the property?
Yes, there, there are some, one adjacent owner, and I'm not sure if it's just to the right of the half lot with the big X on it. I think it is. I think that person owns the part to the right, and then the, the half partial lot that is underneath the half lot with the X in it. I think that person has come to the tax collector and said that they, actually, I think it's a family member's, interested in buying those adjacent partial lots that are owned by the county.
So, they're, they're currently owned by us?
Yes, we currently own the, the two partial lots that are darkened with the X's. Again, the map doesn't really come through that clearly, but, but they are partial lots, and you are entitled by the statute to offer them at the valuation established by the property appraiser, to adjacent property owners in a direct sale, as opposed to typically what you would have to do is if these lots were worth more than $15,000, if they were somehow buildable, then they would, they'd be advertised and sold to the highest and best bidder. This, what I'm proposing to you here this morning is a exception to the general rule, which requires bidding when you sell public property.
Just to confirm, we do not have to have the bidding, or open up the bidding, because it's less than $15,000, correct? It's not taxable?
Only if we receive two, you know, offers from two adjacent property owners, but if you got two people wanting the same piece of property, then the statute requires that they send a sealed bid to the county. And it's more of an administrative function, but we can open it up here at the Board. we could open it up here if the board would like. But if we receive interest from two adjacent property owners, they submit sealed bids, those bids are then open, and whoever offers the highest and best. So if one's $8,000 and one's $8,000 and a dollar, then the $8,000 and a dollar is the highest bidder. These are actually parcels that I believe the county purchased because there were, as I understand it, some mistakes, some error, something that's happened in the past that in order for the county to correct that error, we actually spent money. This is not a tax deed that we received. This is where we actually put money out to solve some problem that was created several decades ago.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lockley to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any more discussion? Attorney Schuler, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure I heard you right. Did you say these lots were unbuildable?
They're partial lots.
Okay.
They're not necessarily, because of their configuration, location, their dimensions, in this case, they're partial lots. You would not be able to build necessarily. It'd be like in the city of Appalachia, Chakola has a requirement that you have a 60 by 100 lot in order to build.
Right.
In this case, we have the top half of one lot, we'll call it, I think north is going towards the road, not Avenue C, but the road above that. So you have the north half of one lot, and then you essentially have the west half of another lot.
Right.
So I don't believe those to be buildable.
Okay. So, they're not lots of record before 1985, is what you're saying, by having that one up?
What I'm told is that this was correcting an error that was made a couple of decades ago. Please don't ask me to explain that the error that caused us to buy it, because I didn't bother to ask myself.
Oh, come on.
I just know we got partial lots, and we're trying to get rid of them. I did not inquire any further than that.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
If I had two partial lots, I couldn't come back to the county and try to get in and make that one lot?
I think that's what that property owner's trying to do, the one that's between the two X's.
Right.
I think that's what they're trying to do.
Okay. Just clarifying what we're looking at.
Yes, sir. Now, I will say, before the meeting started, the property, excuse me, the tax collector tells me that, I think to the far left, the county actually isn't adjacent property owner, but we would be sending ourselves.
That one right there?
Okay.
It could be the one with the F.C. on it, could be.
Okay. Well, I've put you on the spot enough. Anybody else have any questions?
I did not feel that. I did not feel put on the spot. You need information, I'm trying to give it to you.
Yes, sir. Any more discussion before we vote on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That carries unanimous, Jessica.
The final issue is this regional E-911 MOU. I've had extensive phone conferences with various individuals associated with the regional MOU. As you know, my concern is what I refer to as a penalty provision in the MOU that says, it's not directed just at Franklin County, but it's a penalty provision that says that for some reason, any county should pull out of the MOU regardless of reasons. Then if that withdrawal costs other counties money, then the withdrawing county has to pay it. I wanted some clarification or a cap, or how would that penalty be triggered? I never did really get an answer that was satisfactory to me on that particular provision. I did receive information that in this first round, everything is essentially software, the first round being, I think, the $35 million grant. They said essentially there should not be any expense to the county. For some reason Franklin County had to withdraw from this regional system because frankly, we can't afford the system and there aren't grants available. Essentially, they would just go into the computer and they'd turn us off and we're no longer part of the system. So they think it would not cost us any money, but they have it in there for a reason. Somebody's thinking somewhere down the road it could be an expense, so.
Right.
But in the greater scheme of things, the risk of that language versus the public benefit of having an enhanced 911 system, in my mind, is prevailing. So I do bring this to you with a kind of a grudging recommendation, but a recommendation for approval nonetheless.
Pleasure, Mr. Board.
More questions for me?
So you need, Mr. Chairman, you need authorization to sign this agreement?
That's what I'm understanding.
Yes, yes.
I make a motion, allow the chairman to sign the agreement.
I have a motion by Commissioner Parrish.
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Ward. In discussion before we vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimous, Jessica.
Commissioner, those are all the action items I have from the board this morning. All right, for everyone?
It is afternoon, isn't it? Sir, I have one thing for you that's not an action item for today.
Yes, sir.
But hopefully it'll be a potential action item for the future. And I understand that this is a, has come up before, didn't go well before, but for the issues of health and public safety, I think that this board needs to try to address what it can do to receive funds to be able to go and do the maintenance required for access for ambulance, fire, and our police department on private roads in this county, that that would be potentially paid for by the residents of the road to the county at whatever. I think that needs to be addressed. So I'm asking you if you will please get that at the next meeting, or does the board need to vote on it for you to do that? I know it's come up before.
We're not taking actions, I don't know necessarily the board has to vote.
Okay.
What I can do is pull up as a baseline a prior ordinance that I have drafted, I think it was around 2012 or '13.
Right.
That essentially provided for a process for private residents to use the county road department on a limited basis to provide life, safety, health improvements to a road that would not be brought up to the county road standards.
Right.
But the essential gist of that ordinance is that they would have to pay the county 100% of whatever its actual cost is for the road. Now, for example, the last time I pulled this ordinance up and looked at it a few months ago, a load of dirt was $50.
Right.
It was not $50.
No, it is not presently that.
I just bought some for my daughter, trust me. It is not $50.
Not anywhere close.
But, so someone will have to then probably bust or help me update, you know, material cost, or they just have a provision that says, you know, actual cost of materials as they purchase it, because if you embed it into the ordinance, that ordinance will come outdated fairly shortly.
Right. Then it wouldn't matter when the cost changes, we could change it.
I will, I will pull up that old ordinance and circulate it to all the commissioners, and we can talk about it next meeting if you like.
Please do. Thank you.
Is there, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Relates to this topic? Doesn't that ordinance also require the landowner to pay the money upfront?
I believe that they have to make a deposit of the estimated cost, yes, sir.
Right.
I think you do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just one other action item for Attorney Schuler.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
I was listening again right at the same time.
Thank you, yes, sir. Could you consider drawing up a position paper relative to Franklin County, specifically addressing the MSBU concerns that Alligator Point Fire Department, volunteer fire department, has been looking at over the last several months? There's been three position papers that have been written on that issue and how those funds have been spent and so on. And I, there seems to be a great sentiment at the folks at the fire department wanting some, something addressed to them from the county relative to the spending of MSBU funds, how that relates to what has happened in their history.
Mr. Chairman, if I could address that. The way I understand the internal operations, they have already been audited and reviewed by a CPA firm. So I'm hoping you're not asking me to, please, sir, go back and review the review of the CPA. That would be something frankly, I think, is outside of my wheelhouse of knowledge.
Sure.
I can tell you, I can speak authoritatively in terms of the county's MSBU ordinance, what was required by the ordinance, and probably more importantly, what was not required by the ordinance in terms of there was not a restriction placed on any of the two districts that asked for the increase in the MSBU. That would have been St. George Island and Alligator Point simultaneously requested to increase from $50 a month for residential property annually for residences to $95, although there was, to my recollection, a lot of discussion about equipment and relocation of firehouses at Alligator Point. This county commission did not impose any preconditions or limitations restricting the use of those increased funds to whatever purposes had been discussed at the time. They have not been. But I'll be more than happy to go back and pull the records and send some sort of a memorandum back to you and the board in terms of what this county did and did not require of the two districts that increased their MSBU's. But I would respectfully ask them not to have to go back and look through their books because I'm a lawyer, not an accountant, and I've told plenty of clients when I used to do divorce papers, you need to hire an accountant to tell you.
Yes, sir, I just want your legal perspective only. That would be very helpful.
Yes, we'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have something for Attorney Schuler while we're here? All right. So I think next would be Commissioner comments?
I got one.
Go ahead, sir.
What the deal is on that road?
Out here. I know exactly what you're talking about. Out here in front of.
On Leffler Street?
Yes.
Okay, I've gotten a report from the city of Appalachia some times, but there's a, they have a major problem where they're underwashed, that there's no, everything washed away in Sally?
Mike's there?
No, Michael?
No, that was Sally.
Michael, I think it was Sally. Yeah, I think it was Sally. And at the same time, we had the whole issue with the, with the problems in the courthouse, you know, with the bathrooms and stuff. And Commissioner, it's apparently the more they look, the more bad, it's a major problem. And so I can find out for you where they are. I mean, they had hired engineers to take cameras to go and look, but it's.
Mr. Chairman, I did, I did watch the city of Appalachia Chakola's meeting, because this city, and they did mention, I think, at their last meeting, that they were looking at getting it repaired. It's just, as you said, it's a long process.
Yes.
Because of the structural damage that has been caused. And again, I think it was Commissioner Parrish that brought up a while ago about the stormwater infrastructure, they got to look at all that. So they are working on it, and that was at the, the last meeting that the city had. Now, they're having another meeting tonight. I don't know if that's going to be a topic that's going to be discussed in that meeting or not, but.
Or maybe they, they should update. Don't look, it seemed to me they should update the county because that's a bad eyesight for people to come in town and you got a codeine run by the county and then an impassable road. That, that, that'd look bad.
I'll ask.
And nobody, telling nobody that.
And to add to that, while you're asking, since we're in this present configuration?
Yeah.
I think they need to take this end of this road that goes from here to the end, it needs to be two-way, not one-way. You've got people trying to come into the courthouse and don't know which way to go. They're either having to go all the way down and go through trucks parked in the middle of the road and people parked everywhere and try to make their way back this way.
Uh-huh.
If they come around this way, they're still not supposed to go into the courthouse. They might can park over here, but that's one way right, as you get right here to the stop sign.
Yeah.
So they have, people have to go around their hand and their fist to get back to our courthouse. That's a problem.
Alan, do you want to tell him, or should I?
I, actually, it's been so long, I forget, so he must have.
He deferred.
Yeah, he balked, I'm going to call it in pitching. The county attorney, my father years ago, when the state came down and mandated that the county turn that into a one-way street to accommodate handicap access parking, sent a letter, I thought it was going to have him sent to jail, because he didn't like it being turned into a one-way street either. But that was an entity that came down from some state agency back in the 90s requiring...
We had to expand the handicap ramp out into the driveway, into the driving lanes.
To accommodate ADA, and there wasn't enough room, apparently. Yeah, it was a real mess. We can try and have the.
So how's, how's that currently working?
It's just another mess.
I don't think it's worked well ever personally, but that's.
I'm saying minus this side of the road, how's that side helping?
You're talking about directly behind the courthouse?
No, I'm talking about the road where you come off of 98 into the courthouse, the road that's closed. The end of that road needs to go from one way to two ways.
Oh, I misunderstood what you were talking about.
So people can get into the courthouse instead of having to drive around.
The city commission can do that. That was.
That's what I'm saying, why we're making requests.
That was turned into a.
They're talking that the half of Leffler Street is open, let me add two ways.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I misunderstood. The city of Appalachia Chakola made that a one-way street at the request of the county.
Right.
So they can un, the city of Appalachia Chakola can unwind that.
Right, that's all I'm asking.
I misunderstood.
We need to make that two ways so people can come into the courthouse without having to go to the virtual ring road to get there. You know what I mean? That's all I'm saying. Because the interest of the courthouse is one-way.
Right. If, if one of the commissioners would have a motion, let's have official board action requesting that the city, maybe even just temporarily, but in the time being, turn that portion of the street the chairman's talking about into a two-way street.
I'll make the motion on that.
Is it something we can vote on now? You're our parliamentarian.
Have you gavelled us down and closed the meeting?
No, I have not.
I did not think so, so we're good.
I'm making sure. So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by two, Commissioner Lockley and Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion before we vote? I'm sending this in the form of a letter to the.
Well, you can tell them. Tell them we need it, because they done shit, now we got two shit now, one and a half. They done shit down the, the one right there.
Oh, yeah?
And the half of this one shit down, so.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
And Mike, they are meeting tonight, so just saying.
Yeah, but trust me, they won't put it on their agenda too late, but.
They're very particular about following that agenda fatigue.
There we go.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, one more thing.
Yes.
Out there to the airfo, we, we have a lot of discussions about fixing this, fixing that, people want to have meetings about how it's running. But the county ain't getting nothing out of it. The people come in here and they come to this forelimb and say they going to put jobs in here. I ain't seen where they, nobody looked for a job for the county, I mean, for the people in the county. And nobody came up and said, well, I was trying to get work to come in here. They got a gravy train, they patting their pockets, and nothing happening. I mean, it, it's a shame we got all that land out there. And our industrial park, no work. No work but for the ones who come in here and run it. It should be something going on, you know? That's just my opinion.
You're correct, sir. You're correct, we can't continue to be a one economy county.
That's right.
That's not going to work. That's not going to work. Any other Commissioner comments?